I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of June 13, 2024 to order. For our Pledge of Allegiance, Dr. Terry Cutover, working with Police Chief Andy Mills, has brought the International Program Do the Right Thing to the Palm Springs area. The program recognizes each month youth in our community who set an example. Students recognized in this program are leading the Pledge of Allegiance at our council meetings. Today, we welcome Kaia Rose, who just finished fourth grade at Cohia Elementary. Kaia is a student who is always doing the right thing, especially when no one is looking. She follows rules, is honest, and is always making the right choices. She's a leader in the classroom, she's always willing to help others with a friendly attitude. Kaia is a role model for the rest of the class. Kaia?
Place your right hand over your heart and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry, is it Kia or Kaia?
It's Kaia.
Kaia, okay, I got it right. Okay, city clerk, please conduct a roll call.
I want the record to reflect that all members are present without council member hostage who has an excused absence.
Okay, we have the following presentations. The first is Palm Springs Aerial Tramway.
Well, it's hard to follow a kid, I'll tell you, but I'll try my best. You did a great job. Good evening, Mayor, and city council members and staff. As an appointee serving on the Board of the Mount San Jacinto Winter Park Authority, I am grateful and honored to present an update on the Palm Springs Aerial Tramway. I understand that tonight's agenda is brimming with numbers, so allow me to contribute a few more. Five hundred and sixty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight, the total paid ridership for our fiscal year to date. That is marking an 11% increase over the previous year. Ridership serves as a primary revenue source for the operations of Palm Springs Aerial Tramway alongside revenue from our gift shops located in the Valley Station, the Mountain Station, and now online. Surprisingly, our best-selling item isn't a souvenir sweatshirt. We sell a lot of those, but rather something very interesting. It is the scorpion lollipop. And I know all of you would love to have one of these, but I didn't bring a lot of them with me, though I must admit, I'm not sure if anyone actually consumes these, but they do, this is the best seller. After the successful completion of our refresh of all three levels of the Mountain Station, we are looking at another needed update. State Parks is suggesting a relocation of the Adventure Center and Restrooms to a more convenient spot, making it easier to rent cross-country skis and snowshoes, well, not right now, but near the foot of the walkway into Long Valley. Three thousand five hundred and eighty-four, that's the number of students welcomed by the tram from special field trips arranged with Valley Schools this fiscal year, and six hundred and ninety-one of these participating in educational programs with the state parks, excuse me. We now offer a discounted meal package specially tailored for these student groups, and you can imagine what that is, pizza, hot dogs, stuff like that. But for eighty-five, here's an eighty-five, eighty-five dollars, that's the cost of our summer pass for unlimited adult tram admissions until August 31st. That's two and a half months away, and that's pretty darn good. The summer passes went on sale May 1st, and we've sold nine hundred and eighty-eight of them in the first month, a significant increase compared to last year's first month, which was three hundred and ninety-five. Don't miss out on the chance to stay cool this summer. You know, it's kind of interesting because people think that they just go up there and they hike and they do all these other things, but we have passholders who come up to play bridge weekly, and they have lunch, or they come up to paint, or they sketch, or just enjoy a cool spot with a book, not just to hike or boulder. Oh, speaking of bouldering, the tram has become a popular destination for rock climbers, attracting hundreds of them every summer to enjoy the bouldering sites in Mount San Jacinto State Park. Free parking remains available for locals, early mornings being the optimum time to avoid crowds, so if you're going to be coming up, try eight o'clock on the weekends or ten o'clock during the week. The number of summer programs are organized by state parks, that would be six, plus there are specialty hikes and guided nature walks every Sunday until Labor Day. In fact, tomorrow, which isn't a Sunday, but tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., you can join the State Park staff for a guided hike around Long Valley. It's titled "Living Climate Resiliency." There's no reservation required, and it's free with a paid tram admission. Well, Restaurant Week tram tickets have surged by 130% over last year. Peak's restaurant at 8,516 feet reported being sold out every night of Restaurant Week this month, and reservations are really recommended for Peaks, even for lunch sometimes. July will be featuring Military Days, offering free tram admission for active or former armed force members, and discounts for their families. Last year, we welcomed 1,402 military members during Military Days, and in August, we'll see the tram's First Responder Days, granting complimentary admission to current police, fire, personnel, and emergency responders with discounts for their parties. In 2023, we welcome 452 first responders to that event. And then October 19th, save that date for this 36th Tram Road Challenge. Last year, we had 894 participants join this annual event of walking or running or struggling up tram road, and priceless. We are thrilled that the 2024 American Idol, Abby Carter showcased the tram in her hometown segment on the show, emphasizing its significance as a cherished family destination. Destinations, well, the tram advertises in the Southern California drive market, especially during May gray and June gloom, which is in full force. It piques interest in visiting the tram, and guess what? It helps put heads in the beds here in Palm Springs as well, so we're pleased to be able to be part of that. Lastly, allow me to share the number as reported on our free Palm Springs Aerial Tramway app. Yeah, you can have that for free, and it is wonderful because it's chuck full of information and where you can go to get 500 videos and audio tours, which are fabulous. But the last number I'm going to give you is 62. That's 62 degrees up at the tram right now, so I just wanted to let you all know that, and I thank you very much for your time and your attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I have, there's six of these, so, you know, anybody who really wants...
Our next presentation is a city bridges update.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council. Joel Montalvo, city engineer. I'm here today to just give you a very high-level update on our bridges. We have five, I'm going to talk about five federally funded bridges today, and then the one bridge that Seabag is spearheading, which is, it's on Indian Canyon, and we're going to distinguish that one by calling it the Flooding and Blow Sand Bridge. So, one of the important things about bridges is funding. Funding, where does it come from? How do we get the money to build them, right? So, most of our projects, all the bridges here in the city of Palm Springs started between the year 2001 to 2012. That's when they were initiated. They've been around, the one that we're building right now on Indian Canyon started in 2001. So, the funding sources for these bridges come from the Highway Bridge Program, which is a federal program that's administered by the state. Generally, the state and the feds participate in 88.53% of the funding. So, as I go through these bridges, you'll see how much the cost is. Eighty-eight percent, 88.53, is being covered by the federal and the state funding. The rest of it is being covered through several sources, mainly the Coachella Valley Association of Governments uses Measure A, regional dollars, and they cover 75% of the remaining 11.47. Then the city covers... Then the city covers the 25% of the 11.47. So the funding's important. Also, and it's important to note that the funding also has a timestamp. When Caltrans gives you money, they expect you to build the projects over a certain timeframe. If you don't, they will take your money back. So one of the things that's also very important to note in the last several years, funding and costs, especially, have gone up for projects. One of my engineers looked at costs, and what he was telling me, that between 2021 and 2024, costs went up by 35% on bridges. And one of the things that they were pointing out to me, that materials, certain materials like concrete, went up by 75%. So just a bridge that was a certain dollar value, I mean, four or five years ago, is way more expensive. So I'm going to use the one bridge that we want built, which is the Vista Chino Bridge. That project started around $67 million when we initially started thinking about it and applying for funding. Through the course of the design process, that bridge went all the way to $113 million. And we had to go through an exercise, which is required by Caltrans, to value engineer. So when we did that, you know, we had to pay a separate consultant, and the cost of that bridge currently sits around $94 million. But I suspect when we're all done with the design, that bridge is going to be over $100-plus million to build. And again, 88% of that is coming from the feds. So what, most people want to know, why does it take so long? Again, the current bridge that I'm building started in 2001. So there's multiple phases to a bridge project. We start with preliminary engineering, then we go into environmental. There, in most cases, there's a right-of-way phase where we have to buy property to actually build the bridges, widen them, expand them. And then we go through, if it's needed, a high-cost bridge. We look at value engineering. We go to final engineering specs, cost estimates. We get ready to bid, and then we go to construction. So each one of those phases can take a year, two, three, four years, depending on what the situation is. So that's why bridges take a very long time from inception to actual construction. So the one bridge I'm going to start with is the Indian Canyon Drive Bridge. The one we're building today is over the railroad. That bridge is functionally obsolete. It's basically lived its life, and we need to replace it. So that, again, that bridge project started in 2001. We're in construction phase. The current cost of that bridge is $45 million. We anticipate that we will be completed in April of '26, so it's a three-year project. And Harrison Associates is my CM team with dock and engineering, my design team, and the contractor is Steve P. Radels. One of the things that I want to make sure the public understands, that this bridge is not for the flooding that people are talking about. This really is replacing an old bridge that has lived its life. And it's, the last project that I'm going to talk about is the one for the Flooding and Blow Sand that Sebag is spearheading. The next bridge that we're going to be talking about is South Palm Canyon over Takwitz Creek. That bridge originally was started in 2012. We're currently in the bidding phase, or we got permission, authorization from council to bid this project. The anticipated cost of that bridge is $10 million, and we're looking at starting in late 2024, depending on how the bidding goes for this project. It is a bridge replacement. Again, the bridge is starting to not fail, but it's also lived its life. We're going to widen that bridge, and we're going to replace it. The next bridge I'm going to be talking about is the Ramon Road Bridge. That bridge, right now, everybody drives on it, but it really needs to be widened. Again, structurally, it's lived its life, and we need to fix it. So that bridge, initially, we started that one in 2008. We just completed the right-of-way phase. So we, today, actually, council is approving the agreement with the Coachella Valley Water District, which allows me to close the right-of-way phase and then move into construction. So we're going to complete the right-of-way phase. That bridge is anticipated to cost about $40 million. And we're thinking, if everything works well, we'll be in construction maybe late 2025. So this is a widening and a retrofitting. So on East Palm Canyon, there's another bridge that we're building. It's over the Palm Canyon Wash. Again, that one was initiated in 2012. We're currently in the right-of-way phase. The right-of-way phase is taking a while. There's multiple property owners. We work, we negotiate, we get the property that we require. We anticipate that bridge is going to cost $15 million, and if everything works out, maybe late to early 20, late '25 to early '26, we'll be in construction. That bridge, again, is a widening and a retrofitting. We need to make it structurally sound. The other bridge I'm working on is the Vista Chino at the Whitewater. I talked about that earlier. That one is a $100 million bridge. We're currently in the right-of-way phase. We just started it. That one, that bridge is desperately needed. And I will note that this bridge here is one of the last bridges that was funded by Caltrans for low-water crossings. So if you go back to Caltrans today and ask for money to build this bridge, they will tell you, no, they no longer fund low-water crossing bridges. So if we lose this money, if this project doesn't go forward, we will never build a bridge with state money. We'll have to find different sources. So Caltrans, we were lucky. I think this bridge in 2020 was able to get the $100 million to build it. And we're moving forward. We're in design. This one, we went through a whole value engineering process, brought the value of the bridge down, but it's still going to be a very expensive bridge to build. So here's the last bridge that I wanted to update council on. This is the one that Sebag has taken the initiative. They went out and they got a $50 million grant. I believe they just got another, secured another $7 million. The goal of this project really is to try to keep Indian Canyon open during flooding events. And if, during the course of wind events, you know, sand builds up, we create sand dunes. If we build a bridge in these particular areas, we might be able to get the sand dunes to go underneath, and the Indian Canyon stays open. So this one is very in the preliminary stages. We're looking at concept designs, and we hope to move it forward. I know Sebag is very ambitious. They think that they can get, you know, their environmental documents done, get the funding required, and maybe be in construction early '27. So we're working together to try to see, make sure that those bridges are coordinated with the bridge that I'm building. I'm obviously involved in all the bridges, and make sure that the city's presence is known here in these projects where Sebag is working on them. So with that, that pretty much ends my presentation, and happy to answer questions, or if council has any.
Councilmember Middleton?
All right, thank you. Joel, thank you. Very good report. The, gives me just an opportunity, since you finished on Indian Canyon, to remind everyone that a major part of what the engineering work is that we're doing today is trying to make sure that not only are we able to address issues of water, but of blow sand when it comes to Indian Canyon, and we will find the engineering solutions for that. But moving on from there, all of these projects are incredibly important to the city. Are there things that you need from council in order to help you complete the work that you're doing?
Just your support, really. I have a design team, engineering team. Once I go to construction, I hire construction management teams, I hire the contractors. So just the support and the understanding, and hopefully the public also understand that these bridges do take a very, very long time to get to construction. And during construction also, you know, the public is going to get disrupted. All the bridges, what we write into our specifications is the roads must remain open. So when we build a bridge, we always build one half of the bridge, and then we put traffic on top of that bridge, and we move it to the other. So that's, if you drive by Indian Canyon, you will notice that we are building half of one bridge. And when that half is done, we will put the traffic on that bridge, and then we'll start constructing the next. So, you know, patience and understanding from the public during construction and during the design phase, because some folks do think we don't move fast enough. But really, we are working at the fastest pace that a public agency can work at.
That's good. We are not afraid to consider additional project management support wherever it's needed, and these are major projects. Last thing I would like to say is, obviously, the missing piece in all of this is Jean Autry, and we have not given up by any stretch of the imagination, going out and seeking the funding that we need to complete Jean Autry so that we actually have a bridge over all of the entrances and exits to our town.
Joel, I have a question. So we're obviously seeing a very different kind of a sand since Hurricane Hillary. I know it's affecting air quality, and it's blowing a lot more. Does the Indian Canyon have to be adjusted to count for that, or it will still handle?
The Sebag Blow Sand Project?
Yeah.
I think Sebag is trying to look at ways to mitigate sand. There are, when I was doing another project, we did go out and get a sand study, so we looked at experts. Obviously, there's not a lot of sand experts in the country, right? But they do exist, they do look at sand. It's almost comparable to snow, but, you know, snow melts, sand doesn't, right? So they will have to look, and when we're designing it, and I will be involved through the design process, we do have to look at how we put certain barriers to try to avoid sand building up on the bridge. The bridge generally will be elevated, so sand will flow like water underneath it, but during storm, strong events, you know, the road will probably be closed, because, you know, it's hard to see. So you get, like, whiteouts, this is a sand out, and you can't actually drive in those conditions. So the design team will be looking at alternatives to try to mitigate sand.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, comments? Joel, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you need more work, let us know, because you don't have a lot of bridge projects going on.
Absolutely, let's build some more bridges.
Okay, I'm going to mention a few proclamations. Earlier last month, we did Desert Regional Medical Center, was recognized on May 29th in honor and celebration of receiving the advanced certification in perinatal care, the first hospital in the inland empire to achieve a new standard of care designed to improve patient experience and outcomes. We also did a proclamation for Ron Nyswanner, who is honored on May 30th with the 470th Walk of Stars. He's a distinguished Academy Award-nominated writer and producer, widely acclaimed for his contribution to the classic film Philadelphia, as well as his advocacy for LGBTQ+ rights and HIV/AIDS activism. And Tony Bruegermans was honored today with a proclamation at the Palm Springs Hospitality Association's Board Luncheon for his outstanding achievements and unwavering dedication to hospitality and tourism in Palm Springs. Tony's love for hospitality was only matched by his love for his family, and it is Tony's birthday today, so we remember him very fondly. And then on Juneteenth Day, which is June 19th, and the city council is issuing a proclamation to recognize this important day and to commit ourselves to the work of equity, equality, and justice. The city of Palm Springs is proud to sponsor a family-friendly educational Juneteenth celebration this Saturday, June 15th, four days earlier at the James O. Jesse, four days early, at the James O. Jesse Desert Highland Unity Center, where all are welcome. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items to be removed for a separate discussion. I'm going to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. However, another item, staff or council member would like removed from the consent calendar for separate discussion. I am going to remove items 1B and 1L, and I will be making a proposal to council that, for the HRC Commission, that we, they proceed with meeting, but with no new business or appointees, with sole business, we determine the scope, processes, goals of the commission in a positive manner so they can move forward with clear direction. And I'm going to ask that it be done with the staff, the current commissioners, and a council ad hoc subcommittee to be appointed. With that, is there anything else that would be, like to be withdrawn? Councilmember Middleton?
Okay, thank you. Item 1D is in David. I need to recuse. I have a travel claim that's a part of that item. Item 1G is in Grand. I'd like to remove just simply for a very short comment on that. And then item 3B, I would like to table that item for discussion sometime down the road. This is not a comment on the underlying merits of this project, but it is a project that requires a robust public outreach program. That outreach program has not yet been implemented, much less completed, and I want to give staff and ourselves an opportunity to make sure that the public is fully aware of the project, all of the alternatives, all of the costs, before we proceed with any discussion of that project.
Anything else? Councilmember, Mayor Protem DeHart?
So we're going to vote on the request from councilmember Middleton. But what if, can we ask a question of Joel to make sure that there's not any funds at risk if we post, or we delay that conversation?
I think that would be a question for staff as to whether or not there are any funds that are at risk, but when I met with staff earlier this week on this issue, that was not something that was raised.
Okay, perfect. So Mayor, I would like to pull item 1J for continuation at a future meeting.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Vote on the swing. And passes 4-0. At this time, I invite the city attorney, Jeff Ballinger, to provide a report on a closed session.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public, the city council met in closed session to discuss the four items that are listed on the agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Okay. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that the testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. If there's written comment that you wish to distribute to the city council members, please hand it to the city clerk.
Mayor, if I may? Can you provide just a little bit of clarity for the public on what we just did? Because we now have items that we've removed from our agenda, and that people might be interested in making public comment on.
Oh, on, we removed items 1J for continuation. We removed, we have voted to table item 3B until a later discussion. And I mentioned my proposal on 1L. Do you want me to reiterate that?
Correct. I just want to make sure the public understands that we're no longer be taking public comments about items that are not on the agenda. So if you're here to give public comment on item 3B, that has been tabled to a later time. 3B.
3B. 3B, public item has been tabled.
Correct. And that's the Storm Drain Project, and the public is able to comment if they wish, but the council is not going to be taking action on it tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Oh, there was no comment. Okay, public testimony, we are starting with Dottie Wilder, followed by David Vignolo. Okay, we have David Vignolo, followed by Carlotta Rinkie. Yep.
The one and only.
Good evening. My name's David Vignolo. I've served on the Human Rights Commission since April 2021. This public testimony is made in my personal capacity, does not represent the official views of the commission. I was going to speak about item 1L, but since it's been, I think, modified, if I understood correctly, I want to thank the council for its willingness to take action to improve the performance of its boards, committees, and commissions. I strongly support the mayor's proposal to look at inclusion of the current commissioners with city staff and council direction to hopefully make the Human Rights Commission continue its work and do it in a more open and efficient manner. So I look forward to hearing more about this proposal of Mayor Bernstein. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carlotta Rinkie, followed by David Christian. The next speaker is Carlotta Rinke, followed by David Christian.
Hello, I'm Carlotta Rinke. I'm a member of the HRC, the Human Rights Committee, since July of 2023. At that time, there were three new appointees, and on top of that, there was another new appointee, so four new members to the Human Rights Commission over the past year. I believe we've done a fairly good job of integrating and working as a team, and we did accomplish some activities. One of them was updating the rules and operating procedures for the Human Rights Commission, which hadn't been looked at since 1998. And there we also looked at the strategic objectives for the Human Rights Commission, which included subheading under the City Council strategies, which were homelessness, affordable housing, and the quality of life. So we aligned work and liaisons around that as best we could. However, our job descriptions were a little ill-defined, to advocate, to educate, and to collaborate with nonprofit groups, as well as governmental and service groups. I think that that's really a place where we can have some help and assistance with the city, in how we can be more effective and more organized, and a little bit more granular in what it is we do and how we do, how we do it. I want to say that the homelessness project was one of the areas that I looked at, trying to collaborate with the many nonprofit stakeholders and governmental services. But how do we act? What do we accomplish? I think those are open-ended questions, and I agree with David. I think we really welcome the input, our input, as well as the city staff about how we can be more effective.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Christian, followed by Doug Evans.
Good evening. For over three years, friend, the group Friends of Frank Bogert has warned the City Council that the Human Rights Commission conducts its business in a problematic manner, and we specifically objected to the production of the slanderous HRC memorial report justifying the removal of the Bogert statue. We warned you that the monument report was not factual, was intentionally falsified to justify the statue's removal as part of what former HRC Chairman and now Mayor Protem Ron DeHart called a quote "political effort." We were ignored. We warned you that the report extensively plagiarized a graduate student's opinionated essay and presented those opinions as independently researched facts. We were ignored. We warned you that the report's production possibly violated the Brown Act and raised concerns about the HRC Executive Committee's secret meetings. We questioned why former HRC Chairman DeHart was privately polling council members prior to the report being placed on an agenda for public comment, and we were ignored. We questioned why council member at the time, Jeff Coors, was pressuring the HRC behind the scenes to build a case against Bogert, and why he was involved in the production of the report, but we were ignored. We warned you that the report and the HRC's efforts to smear Bogert as part of the aforementioned quote "political effort" were flagrant violations of the HRC's stated goal, quote, "to promote and protect the diversity of our community and to improve human relations through education and community awareness." We were ignored. We warned you that the report was offensive to tribal members, who called it, quote, "disgusting and appalling," and asked why the council had not granted their request to have their families' names removed from the report, but as you probably guessed it, we were ignored. Thank you very much for letting me speak on it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Doug Evans.
You have a discussion about what's happened over the past three years. The character assassination of Frank Bogert was orchestrated by the chairman of the HRC, Councilmember Coors, and other people under the guise of the HRC Executive Committee. Yet two city managers stated that there are no records of any such meetings. What should be more alarming is the HRC chairman was sending text messages and/or memos to several city council members, and at the time, Councilmember Holstich and Coors were on the, were the city liaisons with the HRC. So while this report was being prepared, there was a lot of communication that wasn't being done publicly. If the HRC holds an executive committee meeting without notice regarding a community service award, it gets hammered and threatened with a hiatus. If the HRC holds an executive committee meeting or meetings, the chairman communicates with most of the city council in private communications, prepares a slanderous and plagiarized report that results in a $2 billion claim against the city. It's okay. That's wrong. It's swept under the rug. The city attorney is now battling with the survivor's attorney over the validity of the HRC report. The letters are really disturbing to see how it's being played, because you can't say the report's good for removing a statue and slandering a former mayor, and at the same time say it's not valid for reparations discussion. Ultimately, the failures of the HRC reside with the City Council. It's not the HRC. You've known about the executive committee for a long time, and you've done nothing until recently. Thank you very much.
Okay, is there any other public comment on non-public hearing agenda items?
No further speakers.
Okay. The next item is the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without items 1B and 1L and 1J, which is being continued, and noting that council, oh, and 1G, and that Councilmember Middleton is recusing on 1D. I think I got everything.
Did we have a motion?
I made the motion. Second?
Second.
Want to push it?
I already voted.
Okay, it has been, I made the motion, seconded by Mayor Protem. And it passes. Okay, now we're going to go to item 1G.
Thank you, and 1G is an item for, to put the city of Palm Springs City Council on record as opposing the California Business Roundtable Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, or as most of us within municipal government are referring to it, the Taxpayer Deception Act. This act would change fundamentally the rules under which bond initiatives and other initiatives are passed in cities. I want to be very clear with what I'm saying here. If this law had been in effect in 2011, when over 58% of the voters in Palm Springs went to the polls and passed Measure J, it would have failed. And the intent of this legislation is that no other city be able to take and do what we were able to do in 2011 and pass a 1% sales tax initiative that has transformed our city. Dozens of other cities have done the same thing. But it goes beyond even that. It would ask that a 2/3 requirement be voting requirement, go to the voters for such things as raising parking fees, such as raising any development fees, such as increasing facility fees, any fee, anything that we charge for carrying out a service, instead of being able to be debated here at City Council, would have to go to the voters. The purpose of the initiative is clear. It is to stall government and make it impossible for us to raise the revenues, to do the job that taxpayers hold us accountable for. If you believe in police, if you believe in fire, if you believe in libraries, if you believe in paving streets, it is my hope that you will join me and my colleagues in absolutely opposing this radical initiative. Thank you.
Any other comments? I took your.
Sorry.
Motion, okay, motion passes. Next, I am going to do 1B and 1L, and what I will reiterate, what my, said, my proposal, is that there, the Human Rights Commission does meet, but there will be no new business. The sole agenda item for that will be to determine the scope, processes, and goals of the commission. It will be done with the current HRC commissioners, staff, and a council ad hoc subcommittee to be appointed by the mayor.
Not the entire commission on the subcommittee?
It will be the current existing commissioners on it, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I support this proposal and believe that you fashioned a very good approach to allow the kind of conversation that is needed to take place for years to take place. This is not a punitive measure, as you have put it together. It is, it is an opportunity for a conversation between HRC and City Council that is long overdue.
So we are, so we are, basically, we are pulling on 1B, any new, we are delaying any new appointments to the commissioners, any new commissioners on the HRC, and we are going forward with 1L with that format in determining how HRC will go forward.
I think that's clear. I'll note that item 1L also included a proposed resolution establishing a code of conduct for the city's boards and commissioners. Could the council clarify what the council's pleasure is with regard to that? Do you want to consider that tonight, or hold off on that, or?
My preference in one voice, one vote, is that this is extremely good, but I do not want to rush to judgment on an issue this, this important, and would like to have more time to make sure that we've got everything in here that we need.
Councilmember Gardner?
I'd like to second that.
Okay.
Okay, we'll consider that a table indefinitely until we bring it back and have more input.
Okay. That is all clear now?
No, can I, to be crystal clear, we're not appointing Scott and Evans tonight.
Correct, we are delaying that until we, until we determine the role and scope of the commission.
Yeah, okay.
We have other opening as well on that commission. Okay. The next item is item 2A, a public hearing for an application by the city of Palm Springs for historic designation of the Harriet Van Horn Residence, located 1121 Linda Vista Road, APN 507 132001, case HSPB number 157. May I have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of City Council. For the record, Sarah Yun, Historic Preservation Officer and Associate Planner for the city. Today, I'm here to present on a city-initiated designation application for a single-family home located at 1121 Linda Vista Road. It's HSPB number 157, also known as the Harriet Van Horn Residence. So this property contains a single-family home. It was brought to the attention of staff during the building permitting process. The request for subsequent alterations was then elevated to the HSPB for review in February as a Class III site. It was identified as an eligible site for potential reclassification, and it was at this meeting that the board directed staff to stay the request for alteration and initiate the designation proceedings. The designation application was then reviewed by the HSPB this month, and it was found that it met the findings for reclassification as a Class I site. As you can see in the aerial view of the property, the home is located at the corner of Linda Vista Road and Pasatiempo Road in the Movie Colony East neighborhood. The photograph that you see on the screen is from 1949, showcased in the Palm Springs Villager, and it was probably taken shortly after it was completed in 1948. As you can see, the Herbert W. Burns-designed home is very much intact and reflective of a very distinctive architectural style identified in the Palm Springs context statement as late modern, which emphasized the horizontal form, the uses of integrated elements, such as the thin vertical pillars that you can see, the poles, and the mullions of the steel-framed windows. These all create a very subtle sense of ornamentation for the home. Another unique design feature for this house is the balance that's achieved despite the asymmetrical plan of the home, and this was done by site planning and, of course, the use of materials. Here are some images of the home today. The unpainted Arizona sandstone and the thin set, mortar joints are key features that have been retained, along with much of the original fenestration. When we evaluate a property's potential for historic designation, we look and see if the property exhibits one or more of the criteria listed here in the preservation ordinance. Per the language of the ordinance, we're looking for exceptional historic significance, and according to the Historic Resources Report, which was completed by Chattle, the home meets criterion 3 and 5. 3 speaks to the resource being able to reflect its period of significance, and in this case, the home is an intact example of residential development in the Palm Springs area during the post-World War II period, and it also is a great reflection, it's a wonderfully intact reflection of the late modern style. Criterion 5, which ties the property to a significant designer, builder, or architect, is also met. This is a home that was designed by Herbert Burns, considered one of his earlier residents, and Herbert Burns was a well-respected designer in Palm Springs, and he has three other properties that have been designated Class I sites on our local inventory. Again, for a property to receive Class I status, it must also meet the integrity findings listed here. It is important to note that the initial integrity of the home was what caught the attention of staff in HSPB during the initial review. The exterior was not only in good physical condition, the integrity of the design, materials, workmanship, and its associations were clearly intact. As seen in both the report and the draft resolution, the home has retained many character-defining features, which are listed here and also in the HSPB's resolution. Many of these design features are seen as significant design ideas associated with Herbert Burns's designs. The site does exhibit some changes, and those have occurred over time. They are listed here, which include the installation of some sliding doors on the rear elevation and the installation of architectural, I'm sorry, landscape hedges around the perimeter of the property. But despite these changes, the overall character and integrity of the home is still preserved. In summary, the home meets criterion 3 and 5, the historic criteria for historic designation, and it meets the integrity findings supporting a Class I status of the property, and identifies the property as an exceptional historical significantly important building. While the owners were not actively seeking historic designation at the time, the application for the, or they were not seeking historic designation at the time when they were submitting for an application for alteration, they did express their support of the historic designation during the June 4th HSPB meeting, and I believe they are joining virtually today to answer any questions. With that, I'd like to pass on the HSPB's With that, I'd like to pass on the HSPB's recommendation for Class I designation of the Harriet Van Horn Residence, addressed 1121 Linda Vista Road to City Council. And thank you for your time. I can take any questions related to the report and the staff and the application.
Are there any questions for staff? I do just want to confirm. So they wanted to alter their windows. They, that was held off?
Correct.
Are they able to do that now?
If the property is designated, they will, any exterior changes would be submitted as a certificate of appropriateness, and that is evaluated based on the four criteria listed in the ordinance. So we would reevaluate the change to see if it meets the criteria.
Okay. But they are supportive of this going forward with Class I star?
They have expressed support of the designation, yes.
Okay. Those are my only questions. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing for up to two minutes. I have one speaker, Kathy Wormick. Did you want to speak on this or 2B?
No.
Okay. I thought so. Okay. Is there any other public comment? Public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Okay. Is there a motion?
Move Staff Recommendation.
Okay. Motion passes 40.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is 2B for PNG One LLC on behalf of PS Country Club LLC for an amendment of the development agreement for Serena Park, a residential development consisting of 386 attached and detached residential units, streets, private open space, and public park on 126 acres of land located east of Sunrise Way, north of Verona Road, and southwest of the Whitewater River floodplain within Section 1 and 36, Case DA 2024 0002. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. David Newell, Assistant Planning Director. Tonight, the item before you is a request to amend the development agreement between the current owner and the city. A prospective buyer, SunCal Communities, is requesting this amendment on behalf of the current owner. And before I get into the presentation, I should note the correction that the buyer identified as PNG One LLC is actually a Delaware LLC and not a California LLC as shown in the draft amendment. In terms of background on this agreement, it is in relation to the Serena Park Development Project, which is a 386-unit, attached-and-detached single-family development over the 126 acres previously known as the Palm Springs Country Club Golf Course. The entitlements, when they were approved back in 2016, involved the general plan amendment, Plan Development District tentative track map, and established essentially the site plan for the proposed homes as well as the internal streets for the project. When the project was approved in 2016, there was a condition of approval as a part of these entitlements that required the processing of a development agreement. And so that was done subsequently, starting in 2017, when the initial agreement was approved. An amendment was done in 2018 to revise the payment requirements for the development agreement fee. When the development agreement was established with the 2018 approval, there was several terms and requirements in that agreement related to the development agreement fee, a schedule of performance, what is required for the private open space park that is available to the public, as well as several other items that were specified. The amendment, there was an amendment done in 2021 to revise the performance schedule, the timeline for payment of the development agreement fee, and a memorializing of the utility underground phasing. Due to the applicant not performing under the city's, performing under the requirements of the agreement, the city notified them that they were in default in September of '22. The applicant subsequently listed the property for sale, and so the new applicant for the development agreement has proposed the request before you. The proposed amendment seeks to revise certain terms from the 2018 agreement. First, the applicant seeks to establish a new performance schedule that specifies timelines for mapping actions for the project. The first date is June of 2025 for creating ready-to-record lots for the first 80 homes and the park, with the last date being November of 2027 for the final phase of the project. The second request is related to the development agreement fee, which is an in-lu fee imposed to comply with the general plan policy relating to the transfer of density. The fee was originally $3 million, and the current owner has paid $500,000 of that $3 million back in November of 2021. The applicant proposes to increase the outstanding balance due of $2.5 million to $3.2 million, paid between June of '25 and November of 2027. Third, the agreement would memorialize maintenance and security obligations. There wasn't, there was a requirement back in the 2021 agreement that they had separately, that was accepted by the council related to maintenance and security. We would memorialize many of these requirements with objective requirements related to monthly removal of trash, debris, and graffiti, applying the ground sealant to minimize dust annually, if not soon, if not more often, installing surveillance cameras on the property, having daily patrols, and the installation of new no trespassing signs on the property. Lastly, the applicant seeks the city's cooperation in establishing an assessment district or community facilities district to reimburse the developer for public facility costs for infrastructure to be owned by the city or other public agencies, as well as costs related to development impact fees. In 2014, the council did adopt a resolution authorizing the city to join the statewide community infrastructure program, commonly referred to as the SKEP program. And what they're requesting is that the city cooperate in facilitating that type of financing for the project. The specifics of this financing are outlined in Exhibit 1, and staff generally supports the proposal, but would recommend the final details be negotiated by the city manager prior to executing the agreement if this agreement is approved by council. In terms of the process, the amendment to the development agreement requires the same approval process as the original development agreement was approved. So that is why this application went before the planning commission and ultimately requires city council action before we can execute an amendment to the agreement. There are five findings that are required for approving a development agreement. And this item was considered by the planning commission on May 22 of this year, when they held a public hearing and discussed property maintenance and security issues, the timeframe for undergrounding of utilities, and improvements of Golden Sands Drive. The developer, they also discussed developer reopening the secondary access for the existing Palm Springs Country Club condominiums and the third entry point to the project site. Ultimately, the commission unanimously recommended conditional approval with changes to certain maintenance and security requirements and the performance schedule, as you see here on the screen. The specifics, the applicant had, I should say, that the applicant has made changes to the development agreement based on that recommendation, and those are reflected in the development agreement that is attached to the staff report. So those are shown in track changes. But the applicant, as you see here, is opposed to one of the performance schedule requests, modification requests, which was related to how the performance schedule identifies ready-to-record lots. The commission requested that the lots actually be recorded, and the applicant is opposed to doing that change. The applicant would like to get all the documents in order in order for the final maps to be recorded, but does not wish to record because of the costs associated with bonding and other fees that would be required. So the recommendation tonight is that the council find that the proposed amendment is consistent with the criteria necessary for approval of the development agreement amendment and approve the proposed amendment by introducing ordinance attached to the staff report, amending Section 94.08, .09 of the zoning code, and authorize the city manager to execute the proposed development agreement amendments. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Are there questions? Councilman McGarner?
Thank you. Thank you, David, for that presentation. On the performance schedule, it says there's Phase 1A and Phase 1B. Both of them say June 2025. Can you just provide a little bit of clarity there on why they're separated out? And are they going to actually be done at the same time?
I don't know the specifics as to why they're separated out because they both have the same deadline.
Right.
Ultimately, it's 80 lots total by June of '25. But...
Okay. I just want to make-
They could be combined.
Great. I just wanted to make sure we're not, we're all on the same page and it's not a typo or anything. Okay. Thank you.
Do you have more questions? Oh. Councilman Middleton?
David, is the developer available?
Is the developer?
Is the developer available?
Yes.
I would like to, I have a couple of questions for the developer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Rob Bernheimer, I'm counsel to the developer. I also have Fernando Dutra, who's with SunCal with me today.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for looking at this project and taking the kind of seriousness of approach that you've taken. You are aware of the extremely troubled history that this project has, most particularly with the surrounding neighborhoods.
Absolutely.
And the question that all of them are asking us is, why should we believe this developer when we could not believe the last one? And I appreciate you're not the last one, but the question has to be asked.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that question. First of all, I think the existing owner of the property doesn't have the depth and breadth of experience that SunCal does. In fact, SunCal has experience right here in the city. They came in and bought the Ascena project, which also had troubles, which also had some maintenance issues. They went in and spent six figures, cleaned it up, put a new gate, and took the same approach. They wanted to be able to phase the maps. And they recorded a map last year on that project. They're about to record another one on that project. They brought in a builder to do that. That's the approach they want to take here. And as far as, you know, in conjunction with that, this project is not going to take one builder. There's various different product types that are approved on this project, and those product types take different builders. It's likely we're going to have three different builders for the product types that are here, which is, I think, why Phase 1 is broken into two phases because you might have different product types for one phase versus another, and you want to have those maps separated because the builders come in and they post the bonds and execute on them. And so we didn't want to, those phases are actually tied to the original track map. Those aren't any different than the track map. But they're going to occur at the same time. So we made them 1A and 1B versus 1 and 2. But they're likely going to be different product types. So I think SunCal has a strong record, both in Palm Springs and Riverside County and beyond, about performance on these types of things. And these older projects are challenging. And I've heard from some that, gosh, we wish the builder was here. That really doesn't happen on a project like this successfully. You need a company like SunCal to come in, maintain the whole, you know, bring that, I mean, you drive down that road and it's not looking good. And they want to come in and clean it up, you know, right away so that it's not an eyesore, and we can bring in the builders and take each section. And then you get the right builder for the right phase. And the builders, they don't want to take on the headache and cost of maintaining a big property and dealing with some of those. They want to close escrow and go right into construction, and they want their money to go that way. So that's what SunCal does. It sort of babysits the property, gets it ready for the builder, and then boom, we do it. As far as speed, which I know, I know that wasn't your question, but I imagine that's going to be another question coming up. So I'll just jump right into that. And, look, in the next less than three years, SunCal is going to have to put $3.2 million on the table. Nobody's going to have more incentive to get that back more quickly than SunCal. They want to bring in the builders. And in today's market, they think they can execute on the plan that's in front of them. But we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. And ultimately, the market dictates when building permits should be pulled. And if there's changes in the market to speed that up, that's going to be great for you and great for us. If there's changes in the market like COVID or 9/11 or some horrible event like that, that's going to slow down the market. And so that's why SunCal wants to get these, what we call the project shovel-ready, so the builder can just come in, file the final map, post the bonds, pull the permits, and get constructing. And we want to have each phase teed up for them in the timeframes because we think that's going to give the project and the city the best chance of getting these built.
How much of this project is equity and how much of it is financed?
That I don't know. Do you know that, Fernando? 2080.
I'm sorry?
2080.
20?
20% equity, 80% financed.
All right. That leaves you at significant mercy of a financing market and a credit market that's not very kind right now.
But they have that financing in place, ready to close as soon as, the last hurdle to close is your approval of the development agreement.
Right. So the proof, obviously, is in the pruding. And the first deliverable is going to be how quickly that property gets cleaned up. We want to work with you as a city to make sure this project succeeds. But we've been down this road before. And frequently, it is the new ownership coming in that makes all the difference in the world. We hope that's the case this time. But if it's not, the leash is going to be very short.
Any other questions? Mayor Protem?
This might be more for David. Or I think it, they are for David. So David, in the ordinance that we're proposing, Section G, Item 2, it says that we're recommending third access point for the project be provided. Is there reason that that's not a requirement, that a third access point be required? And it's recommended? And who makes that final call that that third access point becomes part of the project?
So I think recital G is specific to what the planning commission's recommendations were. Ultimately, the council could, well, I would say that the action that is in the ordinance before you is really more specific to what is on pages 36 and 37 with the ordinance. I think this is just more of the background. And the recommendation was, as it related to the third access point, was that there be a third access point for the project. When the project was entitled back in 2016, the city did analyze that third access point at Francis. And whether there was an access there or not, the sequel impacts were evaluated in both cases. And in either case, the impacts were either mitigatable or could, or they were not of significance. So I think the commission's recommendation was related to ensuring that additional access to the site be accommodated. Back in the final decision in 2016, they, the council said, really, there can be a third access point, and that's really the discretion of staff. But there is a public access point at, which would be Francis, which would be the third access point.
So where do we have that in staff's recommendation?
It's currently in the agreement that the developer will work with the city to accommodate that third access point if it's required.
And if it, staff is going to require it?
Staff can require it, yes.
But why wouldn't we require it? But why wouldn't we require it? Why, what would we be waiting for?
It's, back when the project was entitled in 2016, there was a lot of opposition to having that third access point from the neighbors to the west of Francis. So at the same time, there was neighbors at the other access points that were concerned that all the traffic was being accommodated at Whitewater and San Rafael. So there was a lot of concerns from both neighborhoods about that third access point.
I think we're separating the development without having that center access point. And if the traffic studies showed that it wasn't going to be significant, I would rather see that we're requiring that third entry point, so people aren't driving, you know, all the way around to gain access. So that's one item. And then on the, what is the milestone for building the road on Golden Sands?
It would be with the initiation of Phase 1.
In Phase 1, okay. So Phase 1, so it's going to be, we don't say A or B. Is that Phase 1A or Phase 1B?
We could specify it be part of Phase 1A.
Okay. Because they have the, both of them have the same end date.
Correct.
It's just, we've divided it because it is, could be different builders, or?
I think just because of the way the original phasing map showed a Phase 1 and Phase 1B. I think that's just why they're showing two different op-
Yeah, okay. So I agree if we have that as in A, so we know that's getting done. And then with the park in 1B, who's building the park? Who has that responsibility?
The developer of Phase 1 is required to build that.
And then where's the trailer, where's the trailer park in relation to the phases?
So if you look at page 2-
Is it, is it B? Or any?
It's more towards the last phase. So the northwest area of the project. On page 2 of your staff report, the, I don't have the phasing on that map, but that's close, Phase 3 and 4 are basically that northerly portion of the site.
So what else happens in Phase 3C and 4B?
Under the performance schedule, they are essentially just required to have the final maps ready to record. So it's, it really brings up a good point that you're discussing. The performance schedule is specific to the mapping actions for the project. There's other actions that have to occur before the homes are built, which namely are the final development plans being approved by the Planning Commission. Those have to go through that process. The phasing plan doesn't actually require construction start. It only requires that the maps be ready to go. So the term of the Development Agreement is, has through roughly 14 more years, because they've, it's been about six of the 20 that, that were, that have occurred. So there's about 14 years remaining. Essentially, we're just requiring that the maps be ready to go, but construction would happen as financing is in place and a home builder starts the construction for the project, for each phase.
Okay. I think that's all for the hearing. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for this. I have some questions. The original Development Agreement called for the funds to be used for, to buy open space, and that was also in the Planning Commission. But it's not in this. Is that correct?
Correct. So the Development Agreement fee was intended to offset the transfer of density to the site. So there was a $3 million number that was agreed to back when the agreement was first approved for what we believe was for acquisition of open space in the Cone area. Those costs could be different today. So to the extent that we still can use the money for acquiring open space, we certainly can do that. But it's, it's not, the council's not bound by doing that in the current agreement form.
But we can do it if we decide tonight to put that back in. That would be a requirement.
I believe so. And if the city attorney has any-
I mean, that was the original intention when the original agreement was. It doesn't seem, I will comment later. Okay. And this was all done before the golf course ordinance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And on this property of the 126 acres, how much is open space?
So the original project itself actually was more than 150 acres, because there's roughly 25 acres in the wash area. So if, when including that, they did exceed what would have been required as a part of the golf course conversion ordinance. When the city went through the exercise of establishing that ordinance, we looked at this project to see what standards we wanted to include in the ordinance.
Okay. And how much, how big is the park in terms of acres?
I believe it's roughly four acres in size.
Okay. And this is a public park?
It's privately owned and maintained by the HOA once built, but it is open to the public, and that was one of the public benefit requirements for the project.
Okay. Are there places for the public to park by this park?
There are some parking, yeah, there are some parking spaces that would be constructed as a part of, a part of the park.
Okay. And does it, where does the CB link go through in terms of the map?
Back to the site plan. So you can see this purple dashed line that is on the right side of the exhibit here, that crosses through the green portion of the bottom right, that goes through the site. And actually, I believe it's actually changed from that, but essentially runs along the roadway, the kind of primary spine roadway through the project site and out to San Rafael and Sunrise.
Great. I know Councilmember Middleton brought up the complaints about maintenance, and that's been a big problem with off-roading and brush and trash. And we have stricter guidelines. What is our, what can we do if they're not met? What's our options? Can we propose penalties? Can the city do it and charge them, or?
I believe-
This is a question for the city attorney.
The city can, under the municipal code, perform work after we go through the notice and opportunity for the property owner to cure them. This agreement doesn't specify any specific remedies other than potential termination of the Development Agreement. But if the council wants to identify specific remedies, whether it be monetary penalties or the ability to self-abate conditions and then collect against the property and maybe in a more efficient way than under our municipal code, then you can give us that direction tonight.
Okay. I'll do that during discussion. And you mentioned in the staff report that we, the city hasn't regularly used assessment district financing, and your message mentioned some advantages. What are the disadvantages?
Well, the disadvantages is that the costs are essentially borne by the future owners of the development. So future homeowners, the costs essentially, instead of being part of what would be the sales price of all the fees and costs that go into developing a project in each home, potentially would be lesser house, lesser cost for the house, and then they'd pay those Melrose fees as a part of the project.
Okay. And is there any risk, or is there any danger with that?
If the value-to-lean ratio is not high enough, in other words, the value of the property to the lien that secures the payment of the assessments or the special taxes is not high enough, then there can be some risk. And that's why in the city's financing policies, we require a very high value-to-lean ratio if the city were to ever come back and propose one of these financing mechanisms.
Thank you. The staff report also mentions the improvement to Golden Sands Road may be temporary. Why temporary to begin with?
So one of the requirements for the project when it was entitled was that they build a road from the northwest entry to the first phase, which is at the southeast corner of the site. And the developer at that time requested that the road be temporary because of all the infrastructure that would have to go in and the upfront costs that would be necessary to do the full improvement of that road during the first phase, being too much for the first phase costs. So the roadway going through the site is anticipated to be temporary. The, when the Planning Commission reviewed the project or the request, they had requested that the sidewalk be connected to the Mobile Home Park as a part of the first phase to accommodate pedestrian activity. And the developer said that they could do that on a temporary basis.
Okay. You mentioned that the area by Golden Sands would be the last area in the development? Or one of the last? Rob is shaking, Mr. Bernheimer is shaking his head.
Yes.
I only, it's one of the last phases, but we might not build, this is likely not going to get built Phase 1 through whatever in that order. So, and in fact, we have some interest in that phase early on. So that could be one of the first phases built. That's again going to be driven by the market. It's not going to be built 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. It'll be, it'll be built as the phases get sold off and done. And we anticipate that could be maybe even an earlier phase. There are some phases in there that are pretty internal that would unlikely come first, just because of the way you would build the infrastructure. But those edge phases could come at any time.
Okay. Thank you. And David, also, there was a letter and a public comment about the six-foot wall that was supposed to be built. That, has that been changed?
Yeah, the original entitlements do require that the owner, or in this case, the successor would be required to establish an agreement with the HOA as to what should be built during that phase. So that would be required to be completed. Whatever the design of the wall is, would have to be approved by the HOA and built by the developer under the conditions of approval for the project.
Okay. Okay. And the last thing, so there's this, there's no, I guess I should ask the developer, there's, the price point of the homes that you're thinking is up to the builder? I mean, are you expecting any affordable or median income?
It's ultimately up to the builder, but we think some of the phases to the north would likely come in in the mid-sevens, and then the other phases would be going from there.
Okay. Thank you. A lot of people, that's still very, very high, but-
Well, there's not a lot of homes for sale in that price range-
I get it.
-anymore, unfortunately.
Yeah, I get it. And I was going to ask the same question that Councilmember Middleton, is why we should believe you, but I thank you for answering that one already.
Yeah. And the developer is completely in favor of having Francis go in. We think that's a benefit to the project. I understand there were some political issues back in 2016, which is why it was up to the discretion of staff, but we're happy if that's a requirement, that's fine with us. And as far as using the DA fee for open space, we're sort of agnostic to how you guys spend your money, and we're, so we're in support of that if that's what the city wants to do.
Okay. And the only question I got, maybe I can ask David or you, but the invasive tamarisk trees that are going to be removed, which also are wind protection for a lot of people, is there a plan to replace it with something?
Well, I, I think that the plan is to bring an arborist in and tell us what the health of different things are. And as, and we did meet with Councilmember Garner, and sometimes it's like, be careful what you ask for. You remove those trees and you create a lot of dust and wind problems. So the problem is, those trees have not been well-maintained. And so I think initially, we'd like to go in and maintain them correctly and find out what the neighbors behind those trees want. They might not want those removed. So we're open to leaving some of them, still building the wall. We got to make sure that the wall doesn't get undermined by the roots. But I don't know that we'll necessarily just go in and tear out all the trees, because I think that's probably going to create more problems than just, so the first thing we'll do is go in and trim, prune them up and make sure that they're healthy.
Okay.
Oh, Councilmember Garner, sorry. No, no, those are my questions.
Okay. I just have, I mostly have comments for later, but in terms of the sidewalk, again, the sidewalk and the road, so if this is done temporarily at first, would then you finish it completely once all of the work has been done?
Yeah. And I think once we get into specific engineering, what we've committed is, you know, we want to, we want to clean up that whole roadway and then put in, put in the sidewalk. I think there's some concern that if you put in the final infrastructure there with all the development activity, that that's, that may get damaged or destroyed. So if we need to put in temporary facilities to be able to do that, we will. Also, it depends on the phasing, right? So if, if that becomes Phase 1, then that becomes more permanent infrastructure instead of temporary infrastructure. But we wanted to commit to you, the city, that we were going to clean that up first thing, no matter what, even if it's with temporary infrastructure.
Thank you.
Great. Are there any other questions? Mayor Potem to her.
I was happy when I heard that the park was going to be in Phase 1, but then I heard that the phases may not be in order. How do we make sure that the park is built first?
Well, I don't think we have an objection to something that says, I think it's within the first, I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but that was in the second tranche of lots in Phase 1. So if it's within X number of building permits, whatever phase that is, we would, and that's the intent, that we would build it after the first so many homes.
So it's 80, Phase 1A and 1B is 80 lots?
Right. And Phase 1A was 50 some odd, right?
51.
Yeah. So it would be built within the second, the 52nd, by the time the 52nd permits pulled, you would have that, that house in.
Good.
That set of permits, yeah.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. So at this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. The public is invited to speak at this public hearing for up to two minutes. Mr. Bernheimer, you had put yourself as a, oh, you're just for the applicant. Okay. First speaker is Aniz Khalil, followed by Dr. Edward Knab.
I have two observations to make. I'm an owner in Whitewater Club. I have a unit that I own there that's facing the golf course. And two observations. There's a big development that you must know, which is called Maryland, that's just up the road to the northwest of this planned development, that's quarter-built, from what I can tell, and about three-quarters unbuilt. It's been there, it's been, you know, the sales have been going on for about five, six years now, I think, if I, if I'm correct. And it still has not sold out. And I know these things take a long time to sell out, obviously. It's a big piece of land. But I just wanted for you to consider what would make this property sell out faster, better, than Maryland, which is next door? And it's been sitting there, you know, three-quarters vacant for many, many years, as you all know. So it's one thing of, you know, one thing I wanted you to sort of ponder and consider. And the other thing is, are we going to the open space that the mayor brought up? Would there be any way to take the money that the city's supposed to be getting for open space and allot it for open space within that development, possibly? I know it's sort of maybe a little bit fantastical, but why not do that since there is open space already? It's a beautiful piece of land. There's views. It's very attractive to a lot of people. So not take, you know, not take that money and sort of carve out a piece of open space within the development? And that's my sort of commentary on what just happened.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dr. Edward Knab, followed by Judy Deetrack.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm the current president of the HOA at the Four Seasons. My name is Edward Knab. And I'm really happy to see this project resurrected, let's say, because we've been looking at it for a lot of years now. The homeowners association, the board, does have some concerns, and we wanted to voice those here at this meeting. The Four Seasons of Palm Springs homeowners have changed substantially, you know, over the time this project has been going on. And, and the original agreement was drafted. So a new vote or a new, we, you know, we have issues to deal with, with our homeowners that are, that are new to this project. Currently, the appraised value of the lots in question have changed substantially, and so we want to acknowledge that the lots between our organizations may have a different value going forward. There was also a traffic study that was conducted in 2014 February, and it's 10 years old. And a lot has changed in that 10 years of time. So we'd like to see a traffic study that- And, and really, all the traffic that's at Sunrise, San Rafael, and, and Golden Sands. Also, we anticipate the opening of Sunrise past Merrillon, and I think that should be considered in the traffic survey as well, as well as, as the CV Link, which is now being built in the, in the back of our community. The HOA Board of Directors would like to clarify the existing plan and obtain, you know, a good understanding of what exactly we'll move forward so that we can present that to our homeowners and make sure that they totally understand how this is going to proceed and move forward.
Your, your time is up, but thank you very much. Next speaker is Judy Deetrack, followed by Frank Tyson.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Judy Deetrack, and I'm presenting on behalf of Oswalt Land Trust, a 501(c)(3) that has proudly preserved over 5,000 acres locally since 2021. The comment was made that the City Council on the In-Lu fee had intended to reserve this for open space acquisition of lands. I maintain from a reading of Land Use Policy 2.2, it's required. There is no option on it. Under the General Plan Consistency Findings, the city is obligated to perform what is required in LU 2.2, and its language is very clear that when there is a transfer of density rights, there are three options, and only three. One is to dedicate a lot to the city elsewhere. The second is to pay an In-Lu fee dedicated to open space acquisition or to transfer density off of the lot, which would not work here. There were consistency findings made at the time of the development agreement, and I did not see the Certified Environmental Impact Report, but I would assume that it used it for mitigation of the loss of open space. If it were done properly, and you would disturb the mitigation of your certified EIR. The language is this specific in the presently recorded agreement from May 2024, payment of development agreement fee to be used by the city for acquisition of open space for purposes of developers' compliance with Land Use Policy 2.2. It mentions the, the amount of $3 million, which now has been increased to $3.7 million. Thank you very much. I assume that's the end of my time.
Yes, thank you. The next speaker is Frank Tyson, followed by Mark Sherman.
I represent, I'm a member of the Oswalt Canyon Group, you all are very familiar with, and thank God, they've already saved 5,000 acres of open space. I'm concerned about the use of the In-Lu funds, because I want to be, we want to make sure that the general plan mandates requiring almost $4 million of In-Lu funds are followed in the Serena Park Original Development Agreement adopted by the City Council in 2017. These funds were a trade-off by, to the developer, for the developer being allowed to pack in more residential density. Thus, can only legally be used for open space acquisition, not only, no, any other use, including housing. That's one thing we're very much concerned about. We have heard some rumors that it might be diverted, and we, with so much of our valley becoming built up and we're losing our desert, we need every bit of open space. And you people, several of you people have endorsed by the Sierra Club and by the Policy Model Committee, so hopefully you agree with that, that we definitely make sure that those In-Lu funds, those $4 million, go to open space, not for housing or anything else. And we are prepared to legally challenge this if you don't, if you don't decide otherwise. But we hope that you are doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Sherman, followed by Mary Petrilli.
Mayor, Council, staff, my name is Mark Sherman. I am a resident of Four Seasons. Our home sits on the corner of Golden Sands and Sunrise, so we know exactly what goes on in that corner. I have been on the ad hoc committee for Serena Park for the association. I have been on the board, vice president of the board, and we're looking at bringing back the ad hoc committee so we can work well with the new company. We have a lot of questions, we have concerns, as our president already talked about. I think this is going to be a very positive move for everyone in the area, finally having this blight area come to life. And putting a park in that area is great because of all the kids that we have in that entire area, so that would be wonderful. I know we worked, our committee worked very closely with the current owner and also with Grace Garner, and we have walked out that property, I can't tell you how many times, down Joyce, everything else. So I, as a homeowner, and I know that I'm probably backed by many other homeowners, that this is going to be a great adventure for the community. I thank you, and I want to thank the board members and residents coming tonight to be a part of this meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Petrilli, followed by Ginny Fote.
Council, Mayor, my name is Mary Petrilli. I live in Palm Springs Country Club, Phase One, and I'm also the liaison representative of Whitewater Club Neighborhood Association. So I'm here on behalf of being to all the phases of Whitewater Country Club. I think my question or statement was answered, and it was concerning the wall. The last, I attended the Planning Commission, and when that was brought up, the chairwoman said that she had no recollection of that, and I think David later said that, that there was some record. So I guess that has made some people wonder if there's going to be the wall surrounding or not, and that's what I'm asking tonight. It was promised, went so far as they even gave us different examples of which one we'd want to vote for. So I'm, just want to know if that's still on the table. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ginny Fote, followed by Kathy Wormeak.
Before you stop my time, I just want to tell you how I can hardly talk. I am so shocked and appalled at what you did with Item D. I'm here not speaking for anyone else, I'm speaking for myself as a former member of the City Council. We originally approved this project. We were very adamant regarding density and the inclusion of a public park. We included that the development fee would be used to purchase open space. That has been included in every development and greeting, agreement, including the one that went before the Planning Commission. As Attachment 7 on page 52 of the staff report, the development agreement reads, Item D, conversion of open space, parks, recreation land. The developer acknowledged the project site is currently designated as open space, parks, recreation, in the city's adopted general plan, and is zoned as open space, and is therefore subject to the city's Land Use Policy LU 2.2 for the conversion of open space to developable areas. The parties acknowledge the developer shall cooperate with the city to secure the replacement of converted open space areas on the project's site through the use of density transfer of the property designated for residential development within the city. That went before the Planning Commission two weeks ago and was included, and your, and what you have in front of you, it is not included. So my question is, when did this get taken out of the agreement you have before you? Why did it get taken out of the agreement? And what are you proposing that the development fees be used for other than that purpose? I would suggest you use it to offset the cost of Boulders and Crescendo, but I really do want to know the answer to why that's not in the agreement that you, perhaps council members have, but it was in agreement that the Planning Commission had.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kathy Wormeak.
Mayor Bernstein, members of the council, friends, my name is Kathy Wormeak. I live at 699 Wilson Lane. I'm the chair of the Planning Commission, and I'm here tonight in that capacity. I'm here basically, if you have questions regarding the recommendations we made, I'm here to answer them. I did want to correct one item in the staff report. The recommendation is that the council take action to make Francis Road the third access point. That wasn't in the original agreement, that would be a step you have to take, and we, we recommended it as good policy because the two access points are the very far distant ends of the property, and if someone needs to get off, to exit more mid-property, there needs to be an additional access point. So just wanted to say that, that our recommendation was for your action and not an access point that staff would decide on. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Aaron Leader.
First, I'd like to just thank the council for taking 3B off the, the agenda. I'm a resident over there, I just happen to still be here, and I really do appreciate that move. Now, in regards to Serena, I need to put on my Oswalt Canyon hat, I'm the treasurer of that organization. And I want to very much reiterate, we enjoy our relationship with this council, we enjoy working with you folks, and all of that is awesome. Our concern about Serena is two things. One, as the other person just so eloquently stated, this money for open space was committed by this council back in 2017, and there is a question now if it's still there. I see no reason why any developer would be allowed to remove that, develop, that open space and that commitment to that $3.7 million that was already approved by the council. We don't stand in opposition to the project, we stand that, that open space needs to be abided by. The other thing that I want to share is that a wash, I, I find that very off-putting that a wash is considered open space. Developer can't build on a wash, and why, and we can't play in a wash, and why is that considered open space in the calculations of density? And that's what I wanted to share with you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public speakers?
We have no further speakers.
Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion or additional questions from council? Councilmember Garner.
Thank you very much. And what, I, I do want to just ask staff again about the open space issue. Can you just clarify what happened between Planning Commission and now? Because I think none of us know the answer to that.
Sorry, councilmember, I missed the question.
Oh, sorry. There's been several questions about the open space, and we're hearing that at Planning Commission meeting, it was, it was stated that the money would be used for open space, but that, that's not listed in our current staff report. So can we just get some clarity on, on what happened there, and just so that we, we have all the information?
Yeah, I was just doing a quick search through the council staff report. I did see in the recital in the ordinance, and that's still in the recital of the ordinance before you. So I'm not sure if there's a different section that was referred to, but I think that, that is still referenced in the recitals of the draft ordinance.
Thank you.
And councilmember, if I might just kind of elaborate on this issue, I, I don't think that there was an affirmative position by staff to take this out for any reason, to earmark the money for any other reason. However, because it's not, because it is not required by, the policy statement under Land Use 2.2 has the option to replace or to pay an In-Lu fee. The policy under the general plan does not require that the In-Lu fee be used to purchase open space elsewhere. So that's, that's one clarification that I'd like to make. The, the other item that I want to clarify is when the $3 million fee was established in the time of the original entitlement, it was determined as being 50% of the cost of acquiring land in the Chino Cone at that time. So the other reason that we've removed the clause is simply that, that appraisal is likely no longer valid. Other conditions have also changed under state law. For example, we have the no net loss requirements under state law that say if we were to purchase land in, in that area that is currently, has residential capacity on it, we would need to look to offset that density elsewhere. So we, if it's council's decision to, to purchase open space, even without the open, even without the clause in the development agreement, you would still be able to do so, but we wanted to leave the flexibility in case the layering on of those changes made it difficult for us to do so. That was, that was really the only intention.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that clarification. Let me just be sure there's not other questions from that. Okay. Thank you all, and thank you so much for the public for being here, really appreciate it.
Mayor, sorry, before we continue, the applicant didn't get his chance to rebut. He wants to rebut.
Please, go ahead.
Again, Rob Bernheimer on behalf of the hopeful purchaser on this project. You heard my comments on some of the others that I, that were talked about with regards to open space, happy to have that, that go there and the other items, but a couple items were, were brought up by some of the speakers. Number one, the Four Seasons, there was an MOU with the, with the current owner that was signed between those parties. SunCal is committed to honoring the terms of that MOU, and also sit down, and if there's new items to talk about, we'll do that. I think that's more of a neighbor-to-neighbor issue than a city council issue, but we're committed, we're committed to doing that. There's also suggestion with regards to a traffic study. One of the reasons SunCal's very interested in this project is all the entitlements and all the environmental work was completed, and those were put into a development agreement, and they're valid toward, for another 14 years. SunCal would be not interested in opening up Sequa and opening up those types of things because that will just delay this project for another year and, you know, prevent us from really doing what we want to do. So we think the entitlement package is good the way it is, and we, we'd like to keep it that way. Those are the only comments we had, other than what we said earlier. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
No, but thank you. I mean, Councilmember Garner is going to finish, I apologize for not giving you a chance.
Oh, no worries. Thank you.
Councilmember Garner.
And thank you again to the public for being here. You know, we, many of you know that we have been working on this for a long time, and I've spoke with, with SunCal earlier this week about this project and made sure to let them know the big concern about maintenance, right? We, we can't predict exactly when this will be fully built out, but we want to make sure that SunCal is a good neighbor to all of you during this time, because we haven't had that experience in the past. So the meeting that I had with them, they reiterated all of the things that, that Rob Bernheimer has just stated, and it was, it was very positive, so just wanted to make sure that the public was aware that I did meet with them prior to this meeting. I also met with the Four Seasons board. We had a, a good discussion, and I connected them with SunCal so that they would be able to discuss the MOU concerns. I do have a few things that I want to clarify in this agreement, assuming that SunCal is, I hope that you'll be open to it so that we don't, I'll, I'll detail them, but I just, if, once I've detailed them, if maybe you can just give a little comment once I'm finished. In Section 4, 4.04, that's when you began talking about kind of the, the require, we began to discuss the requirements, it's on page 20, or sorry, 19. What I want to make sure is in this somewhere is just the communication with the neighbors. You've reiterated it several times, we've discussed it several times, this need, but I would love to see it in writing, that there will be communication with the neighbors, because that's been the biggest problem in the past, is not just that the maintenance hasn't been done, but that nobody knows what's going on, and we want to avoid that. And we want to avoid that. As I'd love to see, I, I, I don't necessarily need to put details about how you communicate with the neighbors in there, but I would love to see Sun Cal go to the Whitewater Country Club, go to Four Seasons and just give them a presentation so they understand what's going on. Same thing with Golden Sands and also just put up proper, or good signage when these different actions are happening so that people can easily understand where we're at. For section 4.05, 02, regarding the sidewalk and landscaping and, and road improvement, it says right now that you're there improving the sidewalk. It doesn't say anything about the road. And I would like to see that the road is also improved because that road to Golden Sands right now is in pretty bad shape. There's, the stop sign is hard to see. The, the road itself is not great. The, there's speed humps, but they're not useful. And this has caused a lot of issues in terms of traffic, speeding and other issues in that area of Golden Sands Road, Sunrise and San Rafael. And we also, at that meeting with Sun Cal, I did discuss with you the need to just do some, some basic landscaping around that area as well. It's, it's quite an eyesore and since it is your, your property, would love to just see a little bit of goodwill so that that area can be a, a pretty area for the folks from Golden Sands to, to walk by. So I wanted to include, include that landscaping and road improvement in there. And then I wanted to just again stress, just for the record, the, the serious importance of maintaining these lots, doing the proper dust mitigation, trimming the trees, removing the dead trees, all of those things, we've just been working on almost just so many times every year that these issues come up and we really want to avoid that. So I'm, I'm, just want to stress publicly the need for, for a good neighbor with Sun Cal. And I also heard the, some other council members mention remedies. In terms of remedies, the, the biggest remedies I would like again relate to maintenance. If maintenance isn't completed by a certain time, if, or the city needs to step in and complete that maintenance, you know, what are, what do, what do we get from that? And I, and I did want to clarify, I think Mayor Protem mentioned the phase one and making sure that if it moves around, that the work is done. So just like to change that to instead of saying phase one, could it say June of 2025, which is when phase one will be completed? Is that possible?
Well, it wouldn't be a date specific because the, the way that it's worded is they're ready to record, but the park and the phase wouldn't be built until the map's actually recorded. So, but we can, I think tie it to the overall number of lots that, you know, once, once we've built the first 51 lots, we have to build the park.
That's fine. However, we need to tie it so that it's just done expeditiously.
And we are thinking phase one is actually going to be, likely going to be phase one because that's the entry to the project. So all the other phases are probably get jumbled up a little, but phase one is like 99% sure that's going to be phase one.
Great. Yeah, my, my concern is we don't want any of these improvements to Golden Sands area or the park to get lost. We want these things to be done relatively quickly. And so I see phase one as projected.
Those, those things you talked about previously, those are going to happen right after we close escrow. I'm talking about the building of the park though would be tied to the, the phasing.
That's fine. That's fine. But I, I want to make sure that we have clear guidelines in all of this because as my, as my colleagues stated before, we have had trouble in the past. So I, I appreciate and what you're saying, but I do want to memorialize it in, in this agreement if that's, if that works for you. It doesn't have to be, I, I hope that you do it quicker, but we can give a, a different timeline just to make sure that if there's any delays, that's okay. But we, I just don't want the residents of that area to go much longer without so much needed improvements. And, and I think I explained in the past to many people why, why that's so important.
Can I just?
Go ahead.
Say a couple things on the communications with neighbors. We will commit, if you want us to put it in the development agreement, to have a phone number that anybody can call at Sun Cal. If they have a concern or question, they'll be able to get ahold of somebody right away to, to address those. If you want to put in the agreement, we definitely talked about putting in that temporary sidewalk, but also rehabilitating Golden, Golden Sands Road, I think it is.
Yes.
So we're happy to do that. We're going to do that right away. We're not waiting for any phasing on that.
Thank you.
And when you talked about maintaining the lots and the tree, oh, also putting in some basic landscaping along Golden Sands, we talked about that and that can be done right away. Maintaining the lots and the trees, what we've committed, what we worked out with staff, and I think this is probably a good thing, within the first 30 days, we're going to go and take out all the dead trees and all the dead bushes and all that kind of stuff. Within the first 120 days, we have to contract with an arborist to then go evaluate all the rest of the trees because there might be some trees there that are alive, but not in good health. Take the recommendation of the arborist and then implement that, implement that plan. Those aren't related to the phasing. Those are related to the purchase of the property. You know, if we get this DA amendment, they're going to close pretty quickly and then we, we're hitting the ground running on those items. The only thing that's tied to the lots would be the actual construction of the park. That kind of makes sense too because you don't want to build a park that's just going to get blow sanded over and covered in dust and all that kind of stuff.
Sure. I appreciate that. And for staff, if we can just make sure that those other things are not attached to phasing because currently the sidewalk, it does say phasing. So there's certain parts in the development agreement where it says phasing. So if we can just make those changes.
Was the sidewalk going to go in with that? I'm sorry, the sidewalk goes in with that phase, but we clean up the street and the landscaping upon purchase. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I misspoke. And that's how we discussed it when we were together.
Okay. So then the park and the sidewalk on Golden Sands would be?
Within those phases.
Within the phase, phase one. But the road repair and?
Temporary landscaping.
Temporary landscaping would be?
And cleaning up that fence and taking out all those dead trees, that would be tied to?
That would be done immediately.
Yes.
So if we can, we can have that listed there in terms of whatever that needs to be, 60 days, 90 days.
And I'll have to get back to you on a timeframe after close.
Okay.
For, for those. Because I think on the other things we put in timeframes, I don't know what our road rehab, landscaping and fence repair, I don't know what that time looks like. I'll have to.
Okay, great. But if, great. So if staff can just make note that those timeframes should be what's possible. I don't want to make you do something that's not possible.
Right.
But that it would be done relatively quickly after the, the sale closes. And then I know there's lots of, going to be lots of discussion about open space, but I'll, I'll leave that to my colleagues to, to discuss so I don't take up too much time. Go ahead.
Any other questions or comments? Mayor Protem.
So I, I think carrying off of councilmember Garner that 4.040102, where we are defining the, the tree schedule and that we're going to do that work and you're going to have the arborists come in and the trees will be removed within 120 days. We need to add in here very specifically the, the scheduling and the timing of that road rehab. I think you just mentioned that. And same was with the landscaping. So if we get that in, included in this, I would support that. And, and what is rehab? So what is it, what does it mean to rehab a road?
Well, it depends on the condition of the road and ultimately what the city engineer would recommend. This is a temporary road, so I would suspect it would be probably slurring over the existing and creating a better condition.
So do we need to define that? How do we, how do we get more specific so it's known what that is?
I might, I might recommend we include language that says that it'll be rehabbed per requirements of the city engineer. Because unless the city engineer has those with us tonight, we just want to defer that to the city.
I'm in agreement with that. And I totally support putting in, adding in contact information. Wouldn't that be part of our agreement with any developer that they have to have posted contact telephone numbers and?
There is actually. 4.04, 4.06 requires a contact person.
Okay, perfect. And, um, the remedy. So I'm stuck on the property management, maintenance because this has been such a huge issue. I just, I don't feel, how, how do we make sure the maintenance stays on course and, and that there, we're not going to go a month without having maintenance conducted and if, if it's not on par, how do we build into this agreement that there, there is some form of remedy there?
Yeah, I, I think that, and I did have a brief discussion with the city attorney earlier today. I've done on another project, you have a landscape maintenance agreement that then specifies, you know, we can, we can say, hey, you have to do all the stuff that's in the DA. And then if we don't perform, the city would give us X amount of notice to do it. If we didn't perform in that period of time, the city could then do the work and lean the property and we'd be okay with that.
Okay. And, okay. And so we would add that in, and I think Jeff, did you mention something along those lines earlier too?
Yeah, if, if it's the council's pleasure to include some more specific remedies either in this agreement or pursuant to like a side agreement, then you can give us that direction. We can work it out with the developer.
And, and so like the road, what is a temporary sidewalk? So is that again, David, is that something that engineering would, would dictate what a temporary sidewalk is?
Correct. Yeah, we would look to our city engineer to determine what would be acceptable so that it meets at least ADA requirements and in terms of slope and materials.
Yeah. So are, do we say that in here? That the engineering would determine what, what is considered acceptable?
Well, staff would, would consult with engineering as part of the kind of ensuring that this agreement is being executed correctly. So engineering, planning staff would consult with engineering on that. But unless the developer has some questions on it, I mean.
Standard. We did just talk and I think we have a solution on the landscaping and road rehab. So I think we can pay the landscape, you know, improve the landscape, you know, put in that temporary landscaping within that first 120 days, same time period that we're dealing with the arborist to clean up the trees because we're going to have those types of people out there. The road rehab may take a little longer, so I would say like 270 days to rehab that road after we close, after this agreement becomes effective, which is basically the day we close escrow. So that would be phased in. We do the landscape first, then come in and rehab the road.
Okay. Thank you. And so where do we have in here the, the status of the wall? So we had a couple of public comments about the wall, questioning the wall and we?
In, in the entitlements, we're required to build a wall.
Saying where, where, where is that, David?
Well, that's not, this is just an amendment to the DA. So that's, that's part of the underlying entitlements that we're buying. So it's a requirement of the project that we put in the six-foot wall.
So in, in the entitlements, it says six-foot wall?
I think, yeah.
And defines the, the perimeter?
Yes. And the wall has to be built to the city standards.
Okay, perfect. So that takes care of the questions that were asked in public comment. My other one, questions go back to, to David. And the, how, how do we guarantee that that park is going to be built with the first 51 lots regardless of what phase the first 51 lots belongs to?
Essentially, we, yeah, so we wouldn't issue a, a permit for lot 52 until they started construction of the park.
Ah, got it. Okay, perfect. And so back to the, the open space questions that were coming on the in-lu fees. And, and I asked staff and I got a very good, I got the answer and the information I needed. But the language that was included, included in the original development agreement about those in-lu fees, in, and is there a reason why we just wouldn't include that same language that was talking about reserving those fees for open space today? Or do we just restate that we want in that paragraph, what is it? That we want the 3.2 million designated toward open space, future open space efforts?
So the, the development agreement fee was always intended to acquire open space. There was no binding requirement that it be only solely used for open space. There's no ordinances that mandate that for the city. Because it is a negotiation tool for the city to use, the development agreement, we kind of left it open ultimately. There's still language in here that, that talks to that and complying with the general plan relating to that, that policy. But again, the money is solely up to the city to use how it wishes to use it. Again, the, the original development agreement fee was based on an appraisal from 2016 for land back during that time. It's, it's very difficult to assume that we still would be able to acquire that amount of land given it's now eight years later. So ultimately, we left the discretion open and ultimately the discretion of council.
Yeah, okay. But I think it's good because the intent when this was first brought forward was that, that those funds would be used toward open space. I would like to see us include some wording to that effect that, you know, council, council's intention is to honor those, that original work that was done and that the funds get allocated for open space projects, whatever that may be. I think that's it for me. Thank you, mayor.
Yeah, just to follow up, I concur. I want to do ensure that this does require the 3.7 million to be used to acquire open space even though it may not be the Chino Canyon. So I know we have other needs in our city and, but we don't have a lot of allocation for open space. So I would like to have that in there. I do want to address a concern in public comment. Is there normally a need for another traffic study given what's gone on the last, how many years?
Based on what is before the council staff reviewed the SEQA document that was prepared in 2014?
Is it on?
Yep. Sorry about that. Staff reviewed, staff reviewed the SEQA analysis that was repaired when the project was approved in 2016. That analysis assumed 444 units. This is a much smaller project at 386 units. And we determined that the traffic analysis at that time would still be applicable to this project given there's no increase in density. There really isn't any evidence to substantiate that there's been change to the site or its surrounding that would necessitate the requirement to prepare further analysis under, for traffic. So based on that.
What has, what has gone on like in Maryland and things doesn't necessarily affect?
Correct. And Maryland, Maryland, when we evaluated this project, we looked at, you know, the total unit count for that development and that hasn't changed either, so.
Okay. And that assumed this was still going forward?
Yes.
Okay. And just to answer another question, I mean, this, this is designated for 386 houses. If we don't do them there or lower the density, we would have to put that somewhere else in the city. I mean, we have a housing element that requires it.
So there's been some laws that have changed in the state, housing accountability laws for jurisdictions to basically freeze land uses that were established, I believe in 2019 under the land use plan. And that basically says you cannot have a reduction in density in your city or if you do, you have, on one site, you have to replace it somewhere else. So because of those laws, if this project went away, we would have to determine and find roughly the same number of units, density increases elsewhere in the city.
Okay. That was my question. I also just want to, can we today make, require that Francis be a third access point to this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I mean, that seems, that seems to make sense. I agree the remedy for maintenance problems that Mayor Protem, or everybody has brought up, we need to have something solid in there. We can't let the neighbors go through this again. And I, and I, I believe that our, we have good players now that it won't happen, but I do want to do that. I would also just recommend that in addition to a phone number, there'd be some kind of availability to come to regular community meetings. I don't, not on a overly taxing basis, but I think at least every so often to go to each of the surrounding neighborhoods to have a neighborhood meeting, maybe once a year, once every six months seems to, not everybody likes to call. So I think I would like to have that. I agree on the golden. I agree on the golden sands, making the road. I think, I think that's everything. Those are my points. And I agree with the comments that the rest of council has raised as well. Councilmember Middleton.
Just a question. I'm not sure who this is for. In making the, moving forward this evening and saying that as we had originally planned, that the monies that are being paid to us would go for density transfer and for open space, is there anything in this that would prohibit council at a subsequent date from making a determination that we need to allocate some of this money towards affordable housing?
Well, under the languages proposed by staff and brought forward to the city council, no. If the council wishes to include in this agreement some restriction, then the city would likely be restricted to using it for that purpose.
Right. My preference would be that we give ourselves the flexibility to make those decisions at a later date.
Okay. My preference is just to say is not. And obviously, I support affordable housing. I just think we are putting in other mechanisms in place that we have it, and we don't have any mechanisms for open space in our city. And I think that's the only reason why I do it, if we didn't have any other mechanisms. And I think we should find more ways to do affordable housing. But I am concerned that we have no options to do open space, to fund open space in our city. So I don't, for most of the rest of the direction, do you have clear direction?
I think with regard, with the exception of that one issue, I think there's clarification. And also, as staff mentioned, the LLC, Serena 386 LLC is a Delaware LLC. There are also some minor tweaks to the financing policy that we would work out with the applicant between this reading and the second reading. This is being adopted by ordinance, so it'll come back before you with all of these changes identified, so you can see them. And so with those changes, I think we've got clear direction, again, with the exception of the restriction on open space or not.
Okay. Is there any other, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Middleton.
I just want to be very clear. I'm not advocating for any changes in what our current plans are, but I am advocating for maintaining flexibility.
My concern is that when would this actually happen, when we get paid the money? Is that right?
The due dates for the development agreement fee start November, excuse me, June of next year, with the final payment due November of 2027. So regardless of what happens with the phasing and when the homes are actually built, that money is actually due starting June of next year.
Okay. But Councilmember Middleton will not be here, nor will Councilmember Holstage. So that is, you know, that is the only reason why I, you know, I feel that we should immortalize the open space, because depending on what council, actually, we should see what the direction is now. What do people think?
I would like designating it as for open space.
Councilmember Gardner.
I'm with Councilmember Middleton in providing us some flexibility, because we don't know exactly what our needs may be. But I am also curious, what do we know? Is this Chris? I don't know where Chris is. No, not, oh, sorry. Wrong Chris, Chris Mooney, our finance director. I am just curious what money we do have available for open space, if any, because I understand more if it's only the 3 million.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, we have, at the end of this year, we'll have some of the affordable housing set aside that's left, which is about four and a half to five million. And then in the annual affordable housing reserve, where we set aside a portion of the vacation rental TOT, we'll have about 6 million at the end of this year.
I think the question is, do we have any money for open space?
We do not have any money for open space.
Okay. Okay.
And the vacation rental TOT for affordable housing will keep going?
That's correct, annually.
Okay.
Yeah, I still generally, you know, in agreement with Councilmember Middleton in providing ourselves with some flexibility, but I also understand the majority and obviously support open space and the need for it. So if we don't have funding in that bucket, then let's put some money in the bucket.
We could always leave it for Councilmember Holstage when it comes back.
No, no.
Oh, excuse me. We're not going to get to a two-to-two vote. If it's $3 million, then I would rather have the flexibility, but I can vote for this.
Okay.
And one other thing that the council might consider is the original development agreement fee was 3 million. This is increasing by 700,000. You could reserve the 3 million that was originally required for that open space account and leave that 700,000 balance that is the increase under this agreement.
Now you just complicated everything.
I was going to ask you if you could raise it by 500,000.
And also, the cost of open space is going to be more expensive today. Is that correct? So it is somewhat, that is somewhat equivalent. So do you have another comment, Mayor Protam? I'm sorry.
Not on the open space.
Okay.
Can we get clarity on what the city attorney is thinking we're saying about 4.0501 on the additional entrance? So currently, we're saying the developer agrees to cooperate with the city in providing for the third additional entrance. But I've heard the developer agreed that they agreed to do that, and I'm hearing several people that we want to make that a requirement.
You can certainly provide that direction, as Mr. Newell indicated, under the original entitlements, that third access was studied and considered under the environmental documents, and provides the flexibility to the city to require that. The applicant has indicated that they'd be willing to do that. So if the council wants to give direction at tonight, you can do that, either incorporating it into this agreement, or you can simply provide it as part of the motion, recognizing that city staff has the authority to require that under the original entitlements.
Well, I would like it to be written down, that it is a requirement.
You have thoughts on that? Councilmember Gardner, yes?
I think there's a need for a third entrance, as a matter of safety.
So we would like it included. Is there anything else for discussion? So you have clear direction on this, on our comments?
Here's mud.
Okay. So now we have to, is there a motion? All motion. Motion passes for one absent. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you to staff also for that report, and to the planning commission for all your work on that project.
Mayor, I'll need to read the title.
You have to read the resolution, sorry.
In ordinance for the city of Palm Springs, California, amending section 940809 of the Palm Springs zoning code and approving a development agreement amendment with PS Country Club LLC related to the Serena Park project performance schedule for construction. The development agreement fee paid date and other minor revisions related to the conversion of the Palm Springs Country Club golf course into 386 residential units located north of Verona Road, east of Sunrise Way, and southwest of the Whitewater River watch.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 3A, which is an introduction of ordinance number, I don't know, entitled, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, amending sections 2.24010 and 2.24020 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code to expand the Public Arts Commission from seven to nine members.
So moved.
One second.
May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, as the council is aware, at a recent council meeting, the council gave direction to bring back an ordinance that would slightly amend our Public Arts Commission ordinance to increase the number of commissioners from seven to nine. And so that's what the ordinance said.
Okay, is there any discussion or additional questions? I actually have one. So there is other comments that have come from the public and from the Arts Commission themselves about other changes to the ordinance, and that can still come back at a later date.
Correct. Staff in the city attorney's office are working on those other more substantive changes to the ordinance.
Okay. So this is just this one for now. Second question is, there were two recommendations that Mayor Protam and I made to fill these seats, should they become available? And those, can we have those on for the next agenda? What's that? Yeah. And I only say this so that they can start with the upcoming meeting, and I guess the next meeting is August, so there's probably time anyways.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you. You have a vote?
And just to clarify, this will be coming back at a second reading, likely the first meeting in, or the second meeting in June. It takes effect 30 days thereafter, so those two appointments would actually be seated somewhere around 30 days after the second reading. So toward the end of July.
There's no, they can obviously come to the public.
Oh, yeah.
Next weekend meeting, and then I think the next Arts Commission meeting is in August anyway, instead of July. I think it was changed. That's correct. Okay.
They can still attend the meeting, they just wouldn't be sitting at the Dyson Act.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. We have tabled item 3B for now. That is correct. Do we, okay. The next item on the agenda is item 3C, which is a discussion of the general fund fiscal year 2024 adjusted continuation budget. May we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is an opportunity for the staff to provide you with an update presentation for our updated forecast for fiscal year '24 and our adjusted continuation budget for fiscal year '25. Council members and the public will remember that about this time last year, council approved a two-year budget. So this is our continuation budget that we're required to have approved. There will be no action on this budget this evening, and we'll be back in two weeks for final approval of the continuation, of the continuation budget. So mainly what we're doing here today, some relatively minor tweaks and adjustments to the existing budget. In some cases, departments are carrying over some funding for programs that need more money to continue for the second year. And I'm going to have our finance director, Chris Mooney, give us a little overview. He's going to give us a revenue forecast update. He's also going to share with us some good information about where we stand as a city from an expense standpoint. I will mention to the council members, what we're seeing is basically kind of a new normal post-COVID, where we're seeing both our revenues sort of level off as it's coming in. Of course, TOT revenue is really important to us. That's both hotel taxes and vacation rental taxes. Hotel taxes in particularly are holding pretty steady, with short-term rentals dipping slightly, but not significantly out of the realm of what we had originally projected for you in the original budget. Sales taxes holding pretty steady. Property taxes, property tax revenue is performing, is performing fine for us, and the finance director is going to share some of that information with us. We're continuing, council will remember, at the, last year, we added a number of positions to the city budget, especially at the airport, to keep up with all of the work that's going on and growth at the airport. And so you'll hear today that we're continuing to pay close, keep a close eye on our expenses as we move forward in this second year of the budget. We're trying, we're trying not to overcommit in any areas that are going to cause additional expenses for us. And what we're going to be talking today is only the general fund. It won't include the airport budget, it won't include our capital budget, and that those budgets that you approved last year remain unchanged. So with that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Mooney.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam, councilmembers. Scott did a really good summary of what we're going to do tonight.
Can you just clarify your role in the city?
I am Chris Mooney. I am the Director of Finance and Treasure. Thank you. So we'll start off with doing, giving you an update on what we expect to happen through the end of this year, so through the end of fiscal year '24. And then the next section, we'll talk about some of the changes that we are proposing for the budget and some potentially new spend, although that's going to be very little. So we'll start with the forecast. And as Scott said, and what we've been kind saying since the mid-year update, is we have some leveling off of revenue, but revenue is still strong historically. So we don't want to give the picture that, no, this is very hurtful to the city, it's still very strong historically. We'll start with TOT. We expect to end at 50.4 million. Again, over that 50 million mark is very good. As we said before, pre-COVID, we were around 35 million. So to hit the 50 million-plus mark over the last few years is very significant for the city. Property taxes, as Scott said, is, we're showing really good increases in our property taxes. I am proposing 34.4 million for the end of this fiscal year. That number could potentially be a little conservative. We're seeing property tax come in very strong. And then the sales and use tax at 31.4 million, leveling off a little bit like TOT, but still very strong historically. And just to jump to the end, we expect operating revenue, this is revenue without our grant revenue, to be 171.9 million, so down a little bit from prior year, but only 2%, so still very strong. I want to talk a little bit about TOT and sales tax and how we forecasted it. So this is a comparison of last year and this year, month, both fiscal years by month. So the blue line is last fiscal year, and the red line is this fiscal year. We have two months of TOT to collect. So May and June, we still have yet to collect. So we're forecasting May and June to be down a little bit like we have been for the year. So if we are down 5% in these two months, just like we have been for the year, we'll meet our forecasted number of $50 million. Same with sales tax. We have three months left to collect of sales tax, and we're projecting it to be down just about the same as we have been for a year to date. And if we meet this forecast, we'll end up being right around that 31 and a half million dollar number for sales tax. So we feel we forecasted like we have seen actuals come in year to date. On the expense side, we have a total of 182 million. That's about 8 and 1/2% over the prior year. Salary and benefits continue to be the line that increases the most of our expenses. So when you see each of the departments presented here, a lot of their increase is going to be salary and benefits related. We're seeing salary and benefits, five to six million dollar increase year over year. We're seeing the transfers to other funds. So if you, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the third column over, the fiscal year '24 forecast. If you go down to the transfers to other funds line, which is 32.2 million, that line is $13 million greater than what we had originally budgeted, because that's where we put our Plaza Theater money. We're transferring the $13 million over to our capital fund, and that's going to be used for renovation of the Plaza Theater. I should also remind everyone that the Plaza Theater Foundation has committed to paying back the city $10 million, at least $10 million of those funds. And lastly, we would go down to grant revenue on the forecast. Grant revenue is significant this year, 18.3 million for both revenue and expense. That includes the $16 million plus that we receive for the home key grant that goes to construction of the navigation center. So all those, since all those funds have been used, all that revenue will be recognized in this fiscal year. I'll just go back. And just one other thing I want to touch on is, if you look at the operating surplus deficit of 10.3 million in fiscal year '24 forecast, if you take out the one-time event of the Plaza Theater of 13 million, also, we had a one-time event of $1 million for Hillary expenses that we expect to get repaid back as well. You take that out, and on an operating basis, we look pretty good. So a lot of one-time expense in the year, and we still think we're pretty good on the operating level, if you kind of take those out. Now we'll talk a little bit about the budget and the budget adjustments that we're proposing. So on the revenue side, a lot of what we're doing here is we're truing up revenue to be in line with what we've seen in the past few years. in line with what we've seen in the past few years and where we, where we have been trending. So on the property taxes, we have gone good, consistent growth. We want to increase that line by $3 million to be more in line with what we're seeing today. And then on the sales tax side, as we know, we're leveling off. We're right around that 32, 31.5 million dollar number. We want to decrease the budget by $3 million to be more in line with what we're seeing today. On the utility users tax, that's a big budget adjustment, and as we discussed at year-end, or at mid-year, that was bad information from our consultants, and so we are adjusting the budget down to be more in line with what we're seeing. And then the cannabis tax, of course, we have committed to reducing that tax from 10% to 5%. It's going to roughly cut the revenue in half, so we're reducing that by a million and a half in the budget. And then the $5 million comes from the charges that our internal service funds charge the general fund. We're reducing those charges because they're a little bit, we're overcharging some of the departments. We want to be more in line with the actual expense that those funds are actually incurring. So we're projecting revenue in our revised budget of fiscal year 25 to be about 180.7 million dollars. And on the expense side for the budget, a lot of what you're seeing here on those budget adjustments on the departments are net neutral to the two-year budget that was approved by council last year. So what we're doing here is reducing the 24 budget and increasing the 25 budget by the same amount for most of these adjustments. So for example, things like the zoning code update and the housing element implementation, the Parks Master Plan, you know, those were fully appropriated in FY '24. All of those funds weren't used, so we want to reduce that amount by, in the 24 budget, by what they didn't use and increase the 25 budget by what they're going to use. So we're just re-appropriating the, the funds in a new year. We also are proposing a, in the transfers to other funds line, that 3.9 million or $4 million, we are reducing the amount of transfers the general fund makes to other funds, primarily in that number is, some years, we transfer $2 million over to help fund capital. We do it some years, we don't do it some years. We did it in our budget, but we want to remove that from the budget. And then, lastly, on the, on the budget, we're going to introduce two areas of new spend only, and this is the only areas of new spend that we have in our budget that we're proposing to the council. First of all, the city clerk's election budget was a little soft, so we're adding about $50,000 to that to make sure that we cover all of the expenses associated with November election. And then we are proposing a increase of $433,000 for encampment cleanup. Originally, we had a three-year contract for encampment cleanup, and we split that three-year contract to be budgeted over three years. So a third in '24, a third in '25, and a third in '26. In fiscal year '24, this fiscal year, we went through the first $400,000 pretty quickly because of success, success of the encampment cleanup program. So we wanted to bring in the second-year money into this first year to keep the program going because it was so successful. And then we want to move the money that was in fiscal year '26, and that's going to be the new spend in fiscal year '25. So we're adding the $433,000 in fiscal year '25 to finish up that entire contract. And that is all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mayor Protam DeHart?
Hi, Chris. Thanks for going over this again. One, one thing, just for the public's benefit, we have, we talked about on slide five, the salary and benefits is up over $5 million. That's not really over budget. That's just $5 million over where we were in '23. But this is against our plan. Where are we against our plan for '24?
It's a good question. I don't have that information in front of me, so I'll have to bring back that back to you in two weeks when we bring the budget back.
I didn't intend to throw you a sideball there. Okay, so the other one is, well, I think the point there for, for folks to know is, we're not $5 million over this year's budget and salary.
Correct. Yeah, correct. If anything, and I don't have the information in front of me, but if anything, we have vacancy savings more than what we budgeted. So just guessing, and we'll bring back the information in two weeks, but we'll probably be below budget on salary and benefits.
Okay. And the other one is, can you explain again, the slide six, transfers from over funds? So we have $5 million variance. Can you just explain that one again?
Yeah, so this is in the revised budget. We're revising the budget to reduce, so we have internal service funds, like a motor vehicle fund. We have all the motor vehicle purchases coming from those funds, and we have like a facilities maintenance fund, which all the deferred maintenance for buildings come out of those funds. Well, the way those internal service funds get funded is we charge each department an amount to fund those funds in respect to how they use those funds. So for example, if the police department uses a lot of vehicles, we purchase a lot of vehicles, they will get charged, a significant charge to fund that vehicle purchase fund. And so we, in our budget, we overbudgeted some of those funds a little bit, so we overcharged some of the departments. So we just want to scale that back down a little bit to be more in line with what we are actually spending.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? I'm going to ask some. So the 25 budget of the sales and use tax is at 32 million for '25. That includes the Measure J funds?
That does not include the Measure J fund. That is general fund only, and Measure J is in a separate fund.
In a separate fund, okay. Another question. The TOT you have going up next year.
I do.
Is that taking into account some of the new hotels opening?
It is. Yeah, taking into account, especially, you know, Thompson's going to, we think it's going to open, are prepared for that. And so we wanted to increase that a little bit. We also wanted to give it a little bit of, you know, inflationary growth as well, as we did some of the other lines. We don't want to leave them flat because they're just going to organically grow over time anyway.
Okay. And you have the KALPERS there. How are we doing with our KALPERS reserve?
The KALPERS reserve? At the end of '24, we will have $40 million in our KALPERS reserve. At the end of '25, of course, we increase it by $6 million each year. We'll have $46 million in that reserve.
Okay. Just a question, I guess, for the city manager. Are there any major department requests that we were not able to do?
Mr. Mayor, no. I mean, we'll have a very robust conversation with all of our department directors as we get ready to prepare our, our new two-year budget. And we'll start working on that in February of next year. Of course, we'll have two new members of council that will be on board. And as we traditionally do, and I think in February or March, we'll have our council retreat, where we, where we get together, and council members will give us your priorities for the next two-year budget, what we need to be focused on. And then based on that input we get from you, is we'll start putting together those, our new two-year budget. And as part of that budget preparation, the finance director and myself will have internal meetings with every department director. We'll talk about what their needs are, what their priorities are. We'll also be looking at the economy. We'll look, we'll be looking at revenue coming in and what's projected. Do we have flexibility to consider more funding of positions, to do more programs? Or are we going to have to tighten our belts because the economy's softened? So those will all be discussions that we'll be working through over the next six to eight months.
Okay, great. This is, thank you, and thank you, Chris. This report was great. I have one other clarification I wanted to make sure, because I know this came up. We, last year, we had, we had increased the funding for the Free Thursday Nights for the art museum up to 300,000. This is a program the city had requested the art museum do back in 2008. I just wanted to be sure that we're continuing with that program the next year.
Do you need to vote on that?
Well, it was my understanding that last year that we agreed on this.
I agreed on it for one year.
Well, do you want to end the program? The program is funded.
We haven't discussed it.
My understanding is that this, this is an annual program, and so that's why I'm asking for this clarification. We can talk about it now, but my understanding, this is an annual program that has been going on since 2008. We didn't make any increases since 2000, I mean, since 2000 and, no, it's been going before 2008, I believe. We haven't made any increase since 1998, but we have an increase since 2008, and we had increased it to 300,000. That is not everybody's understanding, I guess.
No. And I think at a minimum, we need to have the museum give us a report on how that 250,000 was spent and what that real benefit was to the museum. They've posted some really good financial earnings this year, and attendance is up this year. So I'd just like to hear, before we allocate something for the future, what was the success of those funds that the city put forward for 2024?
Okay. And just to clarify, the funds, the funds that we've given are for a specific program. It's not just a sponsorship or grant. It is a separate item, really should not be included. Traditionally, it was never included in sponsorships and grants. Is that correct? Is that always part of public arts?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So the art museum traditionally has received about $50,000 a year from the, from our Arts Commission. We did include the additional funding for the Thursday night free programming for families and individuals who want to visit the art museum on Thursday evenings. It has been a great success. We did have, and we are more than happy between now and two weeks from now to contact the art museum, have a good discussion with them, make sure we can get some good data to answer Mayor Protam DeHart's questions, try and get a report and some data back to all of the council members that would give you the confidence to move forward with the annual appropriations.
Councilmember Middleton.
All right, thank you. I think it would be helpful to have Mr. Lerner come and make a presentation to us on what they've done. It is my preference that at the end of the day, that we make this contribution evergreen until such time as council makes a deliberate decision to, to end it. But let's get some clarity to it.
Councilmember Garner, if you have a comment?
Just to weigh in on that, I, I also thought we were doing this as a reoccurring, and I'm in agreement with, with Councilmember Middleton, happy to get information, but it was my intention that it would continue.
Okay. So I, I think we have support, but I agree with Mayor Protam. We should get a report, and, and we should actually, like as with other programs, we should make sure we get an annual report on how the program is going, at least annual, with anything else that we are funding. I think that is important. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay.
If I, if I could, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to keep this extremely short. I want to compliment Scott and Chris and all of the work that went into this. And when we started pushing a few years ago for a two-year budget, it was absolutely in the hopes that we would get to a night like tonight, when we're able to move through a budget as expeditiously as we have. That's just really good staff work, but it's also a credit to our community in terms of the reliable income that comes to us because of the entrepreneurship of the people of Palm Springs.
Here, here. I agree. Okay. Do we have to make a motion to vote?
For information purposes only, Mr. Mayor, for this evening, we'll be back in two weeks with those final adjustments for you.
Okay. The next item is public, thank you very much, Chris. The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Our first speaker is Richard Miniot, followed by Nancy Stewart. Oh, no, we already, sorry. Followed by Chip Lyman.
Good evening, Mayor Bernstein, members of the city council, and city staff. My name is Richard Miniot, and I'm here tonight representing members of the Palm Springs community who are flummoxed by the Parks and Recreation Department and Swim Center management in regard to our simple desire to use our city's facilities in accordance with our contract. I'm the head coach of the Palm Springs Master Swim Team, a group of approximately 50 swimmers who regularly use the Swim Center facility. I've been a strong proponent on behalf of the Palm Springs community in regard to the Swim Center over the last three years. I have continued to and still try to work through the system, but the current environment within these areas of the city's operations makes it impossible to make any progress. I really do want to make it clear that I'd like to be the Swim Center's biggest proponent and supporter, celebrating with you that we have the best-operated and managed swim facility anywhere, but we have had no progress in spite of now having more than $150,000 in direct management payroll with the addition of a new aquatics position approximately 10 months ago. You have all received numerous emails and public comment submissions from members of our community over the course of the last 24 hours. In addition, you have received a copy of two emails, which I have sent on to you, that have been exchanged over the last few weeks with Teresa Gallivan in an effort to try to resolve a host of matters with the Swim Center facility. Today, a hastily-written, half-hearted, and short reply just received continues to ignore the issues we have raised. I regret the length and detail of the emails, but it is important that the city council is aware of the significant issues we continue to encounter with these members of the city staff. Issues of intimidation, harassment, discrimination, breach of contract, conflicts of interest, and public safety have all been raised, and none of same even investigated or adequately reviewed or responded to. This is not acceptable. It's my sincere desire that the council assigns an appropriate senior representative from the city to meet and resolve the concerns that we have raised.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Chip Lyman, followed by Michael Pitkin.
Counsel, I'm here to share that the head of the HR department has refused to allow me to review.
Sir, could you speak closer to the microphones?
Okay.
Thank you.
I want to share with you that about three weeks ago, I went to the main lobby and asked if one of the assistants for the city manager could come out, and they did. And I explained to them that I would like to communicate and make the human resource people know that they control the amount of commissions on all of the employee benefits. And so the strategy would be to take the commissions out. On the health insurance, it's from 7% to 10%. On the group life and disability, it's 20% to 25%. And so they said, well, the HR is right across the street. So I went across the street, and the receptionist was there, and I told her why I was there. And she checked to see if the HR lady was there, Stephanie, and she was, but she was too busy to see me. So I left a card, and I said, and I think it was on a Thursday or Friday, I said, to tell Stephanie just to call me back sometime next week when it's convenient, but it's very important, because this was in May, and if we would request all the commissions be taken out of the insurance plans effective June 1st, then that would have saved, I don't know, maybe $20,000 or $25,000. I finally, yesterday, on my eighth visit to see Stephanie, she came out after I waited for 15 minutes, and I shared with her the concept of taking the commissions out, and she said, she didn't want to do that. And I said, why? And she said, because we've never done it before. And I said, but, you know, this is going to save the city a substantial amount of money. And I said, we could, that's going forward. We can go backwards 20 or 25 years.
Thank you.
And recover all the commissions.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Michael Pitkin, followed by Dr. Jesse Niemeyer Romero.
Earlier, I heard this body state the need to stay out of international issues. I disagree. I have spent three years voicing my history experience in Palm Springs to prove violations of not only national laws, but also UN Universal Declarations of Human Rights and United Nations Conventions Against Torture. I too have a brand to protect, and that is my life. 450 gangs in Los Angeles, six active Los Angeles County Sheriff gangs. Riverside County is similar. Jalisco New Generation Cartel and Sinaloa Cartel have taken over Mexico, and they are here. They are in government, business, religion, politics, schools, social media, every aspect of society. Hugs, not bullets. The Wall Street. The Wall Street Journal, extortion, blackmail, money-making schemes, political, social control. United Nations Office of Drugs and Crime, UN Convention Against Transnational Organized Crime. The Covert Human Intelligence Sources Criminal Conduct Chris Act grants blanket immunity to undercover police, security service personnel, informants for any crimes they commit in the course of the state's business. Administrative detention, preventative detention without due process of law is a breach of civil and political rights. I, for years, have asked the United States government to legalize all street drugs and regulate them like alcohol and take them out of mafia and cartel control. Samsa.gov Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration has made progress over the years at removing stigma and shame for those with addictions without fear of arrest and years of legal ramifications.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dr. Jesse Niemeyer Romero, followed by Abraham Ishak.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here to speak on some things I have observed over the last few months. Every council meeting, you listen to city staff speak and present their research on a myriad of subjects: infrastructure projects, affordable housing and traffic safety. There have been representatives here who have come in from regional authorities and local agencies to present on issues that affect the city and different projects that have come before you. Here is where I state the obvious. Every council meeting, you listen to experts in their fields and city staff who spend weeks, if not months, researching issues, policy, historical data and other information. However, on October 12th, the five of you took it upon yourselves to suddenly become foreign policy experts, putting this city on the record when it comes to a decades-old, no, a centuries-old issue. The federal government employs a whole department staffed with experts that are tasked with wading through complex issues that need to be carefully thought out and untangled before creating and carrying out policy. Again, none of you have a background in foreign affairs or foreign policy, unless it is hidden somewhere within your respective resumes. Yet none of you took the time to consult with experts or make, or have the resolution properly agendized in order to have a public conversation about the issues at hand. Make it make sense.
Thank you. The next speaker is Abraham Ishak, followed by Megan Croyder.
Over the last few months, I have been attending city council meetings, community meetings, and have had the opportunity to meet and speak with most of you. One of the points that has been stressed time and time again, both in these public meetings and our discussions, has been inclusivity. The city prides itself on being inclusive. As a city with an LGBTQ plus majority and many people who come from a wide variety of backgrounds, it has, it has become important, no imperative, for this city and this council to include everyone, no matter their background, when considering projects, services and other aspects of local governance. With all that being said, that is why I find the October 12th resolution troubling. Both the mayor and councilmember Middleton have stated that passing that resolution was simply an inclusive act, an attempt to support a specific segment of the local population. But therein lies the issue. How can a resolution that supports only a portion of the residents here in Palm Springs be truly inclusive when it excludes the thoughts, concerns, feelings, backgrounds and experiences of many others who live in the same city? As a first-generation Arab resident of this city, I feel excluded when the experiences of others with a similar ethnic background are disregarded. I am excluded when a resolution doesn't speak against Islamophobia. I am excluded when my city decides to not pass a resolution that calls for a ceasefire, to end the suffering that is being experienced in my cultural, religious and regional homeland. A resolution that speaks out against antisemitism, Islamophobia, terrorism and murder is what would be truly inclusive. What was passed on October 12th is a resolution meant for an exclusive club, a club that does not include me and many others living here in Palm Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Megan Croyder, followed by Karen Miller.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Megan Croyder. I'm a mother of a nine-year-old who's a member of the Elite Otter Swim Team for Palm Springs. And I'm just here speaking on behalf of the swim team, both the youth swim team and the master's program. It does appear that there's been some issues in terms of our contract and right of lanes and practice times, et cetera, involving the new aquatics manager. To my knowledge, there seems to be a conflict of interest there. She is the chairman of the Board of Directors for the Palm Desert Swim Team. And it does appear that they've been getting more priority than our swim team here in the city of Palm Springs. I don't know on her, on a personal level, so I really don't want to speak negatively about her. I just want to ensure that our kids and our masters get the involvement in the lanes and the attention that they need because it's been such a wonderful thing for my son to be a part of. As a nine-year-old who's not athletic and plays a lot of video games, it's really the only way that he's getting involvement in terms of socializing, meeting other kids. I currently have him homeschooled. I'm changing that, but, but this is how he's socializing and meeting other children and getting some kind of athletic workout. So I just wanted to speak positively about what the program has done for me and specifically how wonderful Coach Odison has been to us. She's been very, very kind and understanding and welcoming, and she's just patient and wonderful with all the kids. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Karen Miller, and then we have a couple on Zoom. Karen Miller here?
Yes, hello. Can, I'm sorry, I'm not sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, thank you. Good evening. I know I won't get an answer tonight, but I'd like to know, and how do I find out why the meeting for Iraq regarding the Bogert Trail and South Palm Canyon flood issue was taken off the agenda? I did write a letter today, and I have nine signatures from neighbors that live in the area and are very concerned about this issue and are very hopeful that you will be able to reach a fast solution. We waited many, many decades for a solution to this ongoing problem. I just would like to get support about the fact that this is a life and safety issue for people living in South Palm Canyon, Belmonte, Andreas Hills area. We've lived through many high-water situations. And we're hoping that, we're so excited when we just learned about the fact that there's a solution at hand that the city is working on. And what we'd like to know is, when it's such an important project for the people and for the safety of all the people living in here, and many of us are in our 80s and some are over 55, and of course, some are younger, but it's a mature community. And so we're hoping that this will be brought forth much sooner rather than later. Waiting for a long time to get this going doesn't make sense to us. It, losing many months when it was about to, from my understanding, to work on submitting, will lose more time. We all know what happened with Hillary last year. We were very lucky here in the canyon, but we will be lucky the next time. It's really important. We don't have the time to wait, and we're hoping that this won't take a long time to come back before the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Laura Odison. Is she there? Okay, the next speaker is Jeff Hoichling.
Oh, I'm here.
Okay, Laura's there, sorry. Laura, please continue, sorry about that. Laura?
Yes, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name's Laura Odison. I'm the owner of Elite Otter Swim and Palm Springs Master Swim Teams, as you know. In 2019, Elite Otter Swim Team was started with only two swimmers. Now, only five years later, we have grown into two swim teams with nearly 100 swimmers. In 2023, I quit my job of over 20 years as an educator for Palm Springs Unified School District to run a swim team in Palm Springs. This was a $100,000 pay cut. I did this because I'm passionate about building an aquatics program for all ages in our community. However, I was not anticipating the discriminatory treatment my team would face from the Parks and Recreation Department. Two weeks ago, I stood in front of you all to share the capricious manner in which the Parks and Recreation Department is conducting business with my team. City Council, I beg you to require the Parks and Recreation Department to do the right thing and work with us rather than against us to build strong aquatics programs in our community. Here are my action items. We need our contract renewed now. We have been waiting several months, and July 1st is nearly upon us. Two, we need the city to require the Swim Center to abide by the rules of the contract and not arbitrarily pick and choose which terms they want to enforce or ignore. Three, we need adequate swim lanes that allow us to serve the growing demand in our city. Four, we need the city management to hold the Parks and Recreation Director and the Swim Center Management accountable for their actions or lack of actions. It should not take six months or more to address simple issues or establish new programming. Finally, we need to know that the city enforces its own conflict of interest policies so that my teams and the community are not harmed by the decisions that may be influenced for the benefit of third parties with city employees that have substantial relationships. Thank you for your.
The next speaker is Jeff Hoichling.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please continue.
Great, thank you. I, I'm here to speak, my name is Jeff Hoichling. I live on East El Alameda in, a councilmember at our Hartz district. I just wanted to give you a swimmer's perspective as a master swimmer. And you should know when I say master swimming, I don't mean masterfully talented, I mean old. We are the only masters team in the valley. And I will tell you, it's a great group that I get to swim with. Probably 75% of us are residents of Palm Springs, and we swim for a lot of reasons. We want to stay in shape, or we want to maintain our weight. Some compete in triathlons. A number of us are going to be representing Palm Springs in regional and national meets, including the International Gay and Lesbian Aquatics Championships next year in Washington DC. I also have teammates that are in the top 10 in the entire country in their age group in many events. I don't have visibility into the contract issues that you've heard people mention earlier, but I can tell you that as a master swimmer, we just want the opportunity to have a consistent time and schedule when we can swim. At busy practices, we are really efficient with how we use the pool. We'll have three or four people in a lane, even if there are six or eight open lanes in the water. If we can't get a contract, what it means is we will likely just all show up at the pool at the same time, pay our fees and then spread out across 10 lanes. And frankly, that's not a win for anybody. I honestly, I'm disappointed and frustrated that I have to come to a city council meeting and waste valuable time, yours especially, just to make sure that my team can get access to the pool and plan for the future. Given that there's been a masters team in this city for over 20 years, this should be boilerplate. I, I don't know why it's not. So please ensure this gets resolved quickly. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
No further commenters.
Okay. The next item is city council and city manager requests for upcoming agenda development. We'll start with the city manager, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just as we're looking forward over the next three or four council meetings before we go into our summer recess, the mayor and council members and especially the public will know that on June 17th, we're having our special joint meeting with all of our boards and commissions. It'll be a chance to recognize the volunteer work that they're doing. And most importantly, we'll have each one of them be able to give a short five to seven-minute presentation on the work that they're doing. That will happen on the 17th. Our last meeting of this month, we've had, of course, there's been a lot of ongoing interest in the, in how the Navigation Center is performing, our homeless shelter. And so we've asked Martha's Village and Kitchen to come and just give us a little update on how things are going from their perspective. I think it will be very helpful and enlightening to everyone. We want to, as you can see, we want to give you a Parks and, update to the Parks Master Plan. We'll also be doing our annual Tourism Business Improvement District Annual Assessment Resolution that we're required to do each year. And then we'll be bringing back the, the continuation budget for your consideration as a public hearing. July 9th, we don't have any particular items identified right now, but I know there's going to be a number of, of things added. And then, of course, you can see on July 25th, that will be our last meeting before council goes on recess for the month of August. We're trying to manage that. We know there's going to be a lot of, there's going to be some more items probably getting added to it. We have a couple of historic designations. We're going to be giving you an update to the library renovation project and status. COD, the College of the Desert, we expect to be here to give us a brief presentation on how their plans are coming and some discussion at a public hearing on Museum Way Street vacation that has come, come before you previously. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I do have an agenda request, but I'm going to, any other council members want to go first? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I'm not sure if other council members have had the conversations with the Blue Zone folks. But they've come back and they've raised $40 million for the program here from Riverside to Coachella. And, and also $5 million, which has been targeted for funding for Palm Springs. At the time when we were talking about it before, I think I had little appetite because of the charge that, you know, there was no identifying who was going to manage and staff the program and, and the funding that was required for it. But now that the funding has been found and identified, we're being asked if we would be interested in participating in the program. Coachella is thumbs up on it. Riverside is part of the program. There's another city, unincorporated city somewhere. And they're, they're asking if council would be willing to address this subject again so we could be part of their announcements that are happening in July. So I want to just get a feel for council on if there's an appetite to have the conversation again with them with no funding required from us to come in. With the, there is an ask for 40,000 or 45,000 for three years to, to be able to participate.
I, I would certainly think this is something open to a discussion. I know that there was, in addition to funding, there were some other concerns, and I think it would be worth getting some information. I don't know how we do it before July without getting information from it. I know we both had a presentation, but I think there needs to be council presentation and discussion. Does that make sense? I mean, or staff report on?
I'm not sure we can do this before July, but I, I see no reason not to have the conversation.
I should also point out on the original, they had a lot of support from different community leaders and healthcare. And, and I would also like to ensure that they're still on board as well. I know the head of DAP and Mizele Center were supportive, and I just want to make sure that we do. One PS did raise concerns, and we want to just redress those. And, but I would certainly be, like to have a discussion and presentation, especially if we're getting money and the county's now in supportive of it, that, that would be great. I mean, the county, I think the public, I spoke to the public health director who was very, had researched it. Anything else, Mayor Protem?
No.
Okay, I do have one.
Mr. Mayor, just I want to make certain, I know next steps going forward.
They, we would like to, I would have, I know our assistant city manager, Teresa Galavan, has talked to the Blue Zones people, and I would suggest that we get a, I don't know if there's been contact, to find out what they would like to present to council for decision. And we can also give input, as we have down today, on what we would like to see in terms of buy-in from the community and addressing One PS issues that have come up in the past, the stance of the public health. But if we come back and we make a decision, if it's to do this program and only have to fund 40,000 and what the benefits would be.
So the, the task is to gather information, but, but don't plan to bring this, agendize it right now until we have more information?
I mean, I am happy to, to agendize, to, to agree that we put it on agenda. I know that they want to do something early. I know that they want to do something early. We probably can't do it next meeting, but if we could get a presentation sooner rather than later, that would be great. Maybe it's the first meeting in July, or if you can't do it, next one.
We'll be happy to follow up with a presentation if they're able to do that.
Discussion, yeah. Okay. My agenda item relates back to, Councilmember Middleton had brought up earlier in the meeting, Measure J and the state's effort to take away local municipality control over sales taxes and the importance of what Measure J did in 2011. And for those of you who aren't familiar, our entire downtown revitalization is in large part due to the Measure J 1% sales tax. And we have also now, I have a list of other things I'll read, but this was voted on overwhelmingly by the voters. It started out, we thought, I think, we'd have six to eight million a year. We're now over 22 million, which is more than 10% of the 170 in our general fund, 180. In addition to the downtown revitalization, I think we've paved over 150 miles of road. We're now spending over $9 million a year on road rehabilitation. We built downtown park, we renovated the Wellwood Memorial Library, we've done dog parks, we're doing the Plaza Theater, we renovated Fire Station Number Four, we've done lots of playground equipment, Performing Arts Center at the high school, animal shelter upgrades, Mizell Senior Kitchen, we did a large project there, we've done restrooms at parks, we've done life safety improvements, recreation field lightings, which we'll be unveiling next week, we've done various efforts for our police and fire, our pedestrian master plan, convention center, and we're going to need this in the future for our library upgrades, our park upgrades, our relocation of Fire Station One, which are all going to be depending on Measure J. So my request for an agenda item is that we add to next agenda at the end of June for council to agree to put this on the ballot for November, for the voters to determine if they wish to remove the sunset on Measure J, which is currently going to expire in 2036 if we do not remove the sunset.
I strongly support bringing this back and bringing it back at the next meeting.
I agree.
Okay, that's unanimous. So if that's possible to bring it back for the second meeting in June and understand how it goes through the ballot process as well. Okay.
Can I just get clarification on the Blue Zone? If it comes back as a presentation and council is supportive, then we're going to have to still agendize it. So shouldn't it just come back as an agendized item that maybe there's a report is given, and then if council is supportive of it, we are able to endorse it then?
My understanding with the rules, we can certainly, at council's direction, we can bring it back as an agendized discussion item for council to have a discussion about that. And it could be, at the same time, we could do a presentation at the same time, but we could, Mr. Mayor Protem included, as a specific item for discussion, too.
Yeah, okay. Well, because that then would allow council to take action if that's where we're at.
I concur. I think that makes sense. Yeah. So we don't have to click it. Okay, is there anything further? Okay, with that, we are adjourned. The next regular city council meeting will be held Thursday, June 27th, 2024, at 5:30 PM. Thank you.